Good morning, everyone. Welcome to the November fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-three School Board Manatee County meeting. Want to first start out with reading of the district's vision. And the school district of Manatee County will be an exemplary student-focused school system that develops lifelong learners to be globally competitive. And hopefully we just keep that vision in mind as we move forward in today's meeting. Our invocation is done today by Addison Sterling. I saw him, I don't see him. Come on down. Addison is with the Fellowship of Christian Athletes. So if we can all stand for the invocation. And the pledge following.
I love it, the tennis shoes.
Yeah, you can come all the way to the podium so that it might get you.
All right. Um, yeah. Well, let's bow our heads, close our eyes here. Father God, thank you so much for today. Thank you for the wisdom and the leadership here represented in this room. Um, Father, we know that all authority is appointed upon you. Um, and God, we are thankful for these men and women that are seated here. Um, that, God, I just pray that you give them wisdom, the guidance to move forward in decisions that are made here for Manatee County. Um, and God, I just pray that you bless everyone here. You bless all the teachers, all the students, all the athletes here for health, safety, protection. That's all this in your son's name. Amen.
Thank you. You can join me for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You may be seated. Moves us to item number five, which is informational only, which was posted with the material for the meetings. Item six, approval of the agenda. The chair has found good cause to amend the agenda to include all items listed under Agenda amendments on the November fourteenth, twenty-three agenda, updated November ninth, two thousand and twenty-three, and posted to the district website, manateeschools.net.
So moved. I'll second.
I'm still signing in.
Same here.
Somebody messed with my computer.
So we have a motion, and we have a second, and we have a board member who's not signed in yet. Two.
Shame upon you. We're trying, we're trying. Can we vote by voice, please?
We absolutely can. We're gonna go ahead and vote manually. All those in favor of the approval of the agenda, raise your hand, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, same sign. Carries five to zero. Uh, approval of the minutes, Superintendent Weisong.
Good morning, Chair Choat and board members. I recommend approval of the minutes from the October tenth, two thousand and twenty-three School Board Workshop, the October twentieth, two thousand and twenty-three School Board Shade Meeting and Workshop, and the October twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-three School Board Meeting.
So moved.
I'll second.
Sorry, I'm trying to still log in. We have a motion and a second. Uh, we're gonna go ahead and vote manually again. So all those in favor of the approval of the minutes, raise your hand and say aye. Aye. Any opposed, same sign. No opposed, carries five to zero. Moving on to item number eight, student celebrations. Uh, Mr. Barber, come on up.
All right, we got a really good group here. Uh, Mr. Board Chair, Board Members, and Superintendent Weisong. Uh, this is really a neat, uh, community event, as you'll see. Uh, uh, the Manatee County Supervisor of Elections, Michael Bennett. Uh, we're pleased to have him here today with us. And, uh, they, uh, he oversaw a contest amongst our high school students to produce the artwork for the "I Voted" sticker that will be distributed to Manatee County voters for elections being held in March, August, and November of, uh, two thousand and twenty-four, so a year from now. So just a really cool event, and I'm gonna introduce Mr. Bennett to say a few words about it.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, if I could go on for a few minutes?
Absolutely.
I gotta tell you, it's interesting. This is the first time, and I wanna thank Dawn for really pushing this, that the school board has recognized the students who've done all the work. And what the Boys and Girls Club, because the schools have it, okay? It's really a shame. Too many times, we find ourselves trying to get students interested in elections, to get interested in voting, but we don't get any cooperation from the school board. So I'm hoping that our new superintendent will take it by word when I tell you how important it is. We've done several things to really push this. Since I got elected, we started doing it every other year for the elections. But this was the first time that the student who did the work has been recognized, and that's really a shame. We had a other problem when I was trying to get the schools to allow me to come and talk to the students so we could get them registered to vote. A lot of people don't realize you can register to vote at sixteen. You can't vote until you're eighteen, but you can register to vote. We just had the Chamber of Commerce, the big banking thing. We signed up over two hundred students that were sixteen years old, a couple worked. They were coming to vote, okay? Get registered to vote. One of the other things that we do, and I would really love the superintendent to push this and the school board to push this, is we hire these kids for, if you will, at sixteen, as long as they're registered to vote, to come down and work the elections. Now, listen to this deal. This is a heck of a deal. They're gonna come down and work the election. They're gonna take the day off the school. That ain't bad, okay? They're gonna get five hours of community service, which they need for graduation, and I'm gonna pay them a hundred and fifty dollars for the day. Now, I gotta tell you, I skipped a lot of school when I was a kid, and ain't nobody ever paid me, okay? Not even once. But there's so many things that we can do with the high school students today to get them registered. I really got on the campaign, if you will, when I was in the Florida Senate. And when I was in the Florida Senate, two fourth graders, fourth graders now, came to my office one day and they said, Senator Bennett, we need help. We were assigned to do a paper on the motto for the state of Florida. And the sad part about it is, even though it's on that flag, most people do not know what the motto is for the state of Florida. So I said, what's the problem? And they said, well, we don't have a motto in Florida. I'm looking at the flag, I'm looking at my Senate ring, I'm looking at my stationery. It's carved in the Capitol, and I said, nah, maybe you better go back and do some more research. The two fourth graders went back, did the research, came back the following week, and they said, Senator Bennett, we're positive. But they were so positive that I said, why don't you come back next week? Do a little bit more research. Soon as they left, I called down the Senate staff. I said, you gotta research this, this is crazy. Senate staff came back to me a week later and said, you're not gonna believe this. Florida does not have an official motto. So the two fourth graders came back. I said, I will write a letter to your teacher that you were absolutely correct. Florida never adopted it. I said, what are you gonna do about it? They said, what can we do? We can change the laws. So in two thousand and five, I introduced legislation over the Senate. The House introduced it over there, and the motto for the state of Florida was changed, and it was added. The neat part about it is, as I told these two boys, that I would do it for them under one condition. And that condition was, is they had to present the bill, and they did. And so in two thousand and five, if you look at the motto for the state of Florida, it's "In God We Trust." But two fourth graders changed this. Now we've got students in high school who are really promoting voting and civics and pushing. And what Lauren did is fantastic. These stickers are gonna go on every vote-by-mail ballot that goes out. Everyone that comes back, they're gonna have a sticker that even though they might not have went to the precinct, they will have a sticker that she took the time and effort to do. So I wanna congratulate you. Here's a hundred of them to get to your friends. Encourage all of your friends, vote by mail. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Bennett. Thank you.
Hey.
I'd like to see one of those.
Uh, Mr. Bennett, how many, how many anticipated votes do we, you know, meaning, how many people are gonna see this sticker?
I'm glad you asked. Prior to last year's legislation, we had a hundred and twenty people sign up for vote by mail, okay? And people are afraid of vote by mail because of bad press, okay? They shouldn't look at vote by mail as an insurance policy that they're gonna be able to vote. Because you get up on Tuesday morning, you think you're gonna go down there. And then the boss says, you gotta work late, you gotta come in early, you can't get down there. You get sick, you gotta go to the hospital. But if you've got that vote by mail ballot, okay? You know it can go by, if somebody else can drop it off. The other thing with the vote by mail is you get a better educated voter. Because what happens is my wife and I are sitting there in the morning, our kids are here, and they're hearing us talk about the ballot. They're hearing us talk about the candidate, certainly. Hearing us understand why voting for local elections, school boards, are much more important than that of the President of the United States. Because you all are the ones who affect their life immediately. They might not get anything done in Washington. That's a term of bad knowledge, if you don't get anything done in Washington. But anyhow, it's the vote by mail. Because of the legislation last year, we're pushing hard to get people to vote up. You gotta go down and reregister for vote by mail. We're, originally, when they got it, of course, it dropped to zero. Everybody had to vote, it dropped to about forty thousand now. We'd like to get it back to the hundred thousand. So when you talk to your friends and neighbors, encourage them to sign up for vote by mail, even if they wanna go down to the precinct and put it in the box, okay? They can do it. Because, I'll be honest with you, I vote by mail. But I gotta take my ballot to the office and put it in the box. I don't give to the staff, or just something. A lot of veterans feel the same way I do. It doesn't count, you know, putting it in the box, okay? But it does. So we really encourage, I don't mind the ad, Chair.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there a picture we can see of it?
Can we have a sticker?
Yeah, we're gonna show you, we're gonna show you the sticker. We're gonna show you the sticker in just a moment. Thank you, Senator and Supervisor Bennett. Now to tell us a little bit more about the winner of this year's contest. Uh, we have Jeremiah Bowman. He's a specialist for the visual and performing arts.
Thank you, Mr. Barber. Chair Choat, School Board, Superintendent Weisong, thank you for having us here today. Uh, this is a great event that, you know, for the two years I've been involved, uh, it's been an exciting opportunity. And the last winner was also a student from Manatee High School. Her name was Johanna Romero Capula, and I believe I sent those stickers to all of you. So this year, we have Lauren Holbrook, who is a freshman at Manatee High School. And she is joined today by her mother, Ms. Vicki Holbrook. Thank you for being here today. Currently, she's enrolled in art classes at Manatee High School. She's a new budding artist, and we're excited to see what she does in the future. She also participates in the concert band and the jazz band. And she is also a member of the De Soto Boys and Girls Club. And the Boys and Girls Club President is here today with us, Ms. Dawn Stanhope. Thank you for being here. And I wanted to mention that Lauren is actually a nominee for the Club Youth of the Year. So congratulations on top of your awesome win today. She's also a Take Stock in Children two-year scholarship recipient and has been a member of the Girl Scouts for five years. Uh, she volunteers with Soren Four and her church, Bradenton Baptist Church. And more than five hundred thousand of these stickers are gonna be printed and given to voters in Manatee County over the next three elections. So congratulations to Lauren. And I believe you have a few words you'd like to say?
Yeah, I have something written down.
Yeah, please.
Hi. Thank you so much for having me here today. Honestly, the whole sticker ordeal is really interesting and cool to me. I got the opportunity to participate through my Boys and Girls Club and was encouraged to really try on it. So I took the time to incorporate all the key elements. Of course, since this is Manatee County, I had to include a drawing of one of our adorable manatees. In addition, it was important to include both red and blue to represent our major political parties. Then, the stars on it were my own little touch. They're my favorite, uh, shape. But when I submitted my artwork, I definitely wasn't expecting to win the contest. I got the message through my mentor while in Spanish class and was super thrilled. I've had a few interview things with common people and even got the supervisor of elections, Mr. Mike Bennett. I also want to thank the people in my life, especially my mom, for supporting me through everything and pushing me further.
If we could, we're gonna show, we're gonna show the logo right now. So that's what people will be getting, so.
Adorable.
And it's great to know the meaning behind it, but it's even more special that you're one of our students. And, uh, we always love to celebrate our students when they excel at something. So, uh, thank you all very much for being here today.
Very good.
Thank y'all.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Weisong.
Absolutely.
Have a good day, ladies.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mrs. Bennett.
Thank you. Okay, we have one other, uh, brief, uh, presentation for you this morning. It's a good news moment, and, uh, as you know, uh, there's tons of good news about our school district. Every day our schools are in operation, our students, teachers, and, uh, employees are doing great things. And, uh, tonight, we have a very special event. It's the School Showcase Fair, and we're expecting a big crowd at Manatee Technical College from five-thirty to seven-thirty, and we wanna show you, uh, a little thing that we've been, uh, promoting on social media to get the word out on that event. So if we could show that video? Great. We just wanted to share that with you, and we hope to see you at the School Showcase Fair tonight. So thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Barber. Brings us to item number ten on the meeting today, which is public comments. And I have two public comments, Mark Stanek and Heather Felton. So, uh, Mrs. Stanek, you wanna come on up?
Morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Just to add context, last Tuesday, we celebrated Victims of Communism Day here in, in the state of Florida. So my name is Mark Stanek, and I represent Victims of Communism Manatee, Inc. Whittaker Chambers, a former spy for the Soviet Union, who turned conservative right at once, said, "I see communism as the focus of the concentrated evil of our time." Communism is evil. The scale of violence conceived by and perpetrated under this ideology could have only been accomplished by people whose hearts were awash in darkness. It's a violent ideology that usurps individual freedoms and replaces them with a dictatorship which becomes the sole proprietor of its morality. Its totalitarian nature is born out of the transformation of ideology and, and politics into absolute scientific truth. Originally characterized as a dictatorship of the proletariat, communism under Lenin and Stalin quickly morphed into a war between the party-state and its own people, which continues to today. While national differences persist, all communist regimes share a terrible legacy: murder. It's estimated that at least two hundred million lives have been lost under communist regimes, and tragically in Cambodia, under the Khmer Rouge, between twenty-five and thirty-three percent of the entire population was exterminated by this ideology. As such, communism was and continues to be the antithesis of everything America stands for. We applauded Governor DeSantis when he signed HB three ninety-five into law last year. However, we immediately recognized the futility of describing the depth of the evil inherent in communism in a mere forty-five minutes of instruction. So to help preserve future generations, we spontaneously created a program to make our high school students here in Manatee County starkly aware of the evils of communism. As part of our program, we organized a workshop where people who have lived under communism related their experiences directly to the students. The results were impressive. With over ninety-six enrollees, twenty-seven projects, and eight thousand dollars in scholarships awarded last week, we can claim more than a modicum of success for our efforts. Best of all, we have laid the groundwork to continue this program for years to come. We wanna thank the Manatee County school system, especially Superintendent Weisong and Executive Director Kevin Chapman for their unflagging support of the program. Without their significant efforts, this project would not have been possible. And it's to the credit of the Manatee school system for the quality of the work that had been submitted. We can say with confidence that we can all take pride in our high school students. It's therefore fitting that the day on which the victims of communism was commemorated here in Manatee County is the same day that the Bolshevik Party seized power in St. Petersburg a hundred and six years ago. And it's also fitting that this scholarship dedicated to exposing the evils wrought by communism was conceived, organized, and executed by a group of citizen volunteers here in the state of Florida. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Felton? Was that bell actually present in this room? Certainly. Because the volume's not working on the TV? I was like, man, that's way louder than it usually is.
It's over here.
Okay. Ms. Felton?
Good morning. Uh, good morning, Board. Good morning, Dr. Weisong. Um, I just wanted to make sure that you are aware that right now, as we are sitting in this room, our Manatee County Commission is hearing public comment with regard to a variety of issues, including the, uh, removal of the all-access pass for our students. As a high school teacher, this hits home for me. Our students need to be able to access things that we don't have in our media centers. There's only so much we can put in there. To be able to have access online to journals and encyclopedias and nonfiction books that provide an abundance of background information for research of any kind is necessary for our kids. They cannot always get to a library. To be able to have access to those things is so important. We want our students to be educated. We want them to know what's happening in the world. We want them to be able to compete in a global market. I had a student ask me last January, when I started taking books off of the shelves in my classroom. I had over eight hundred books that I myself had collected over nine years as a teacher, that I brought in for them. Asking me, why is it they want us to be ignorant? What are they trying to hide from us that we cannot have access to books? This is a junior, a kid who is a low-level student. All right? And he wants to know. I had no answer for him. I did not know what to tell him. And now he's in his senior year. All of my former students are all seniors this year. And they and their younger siblings and their younger classmates are losing access to information. Nonfiction information. It's not a question of pornography and somebody wrote something that's inappropriate for children. This is nonfiction information that they can use to build their knowledge, and they are losing access to it. It's happening right now, today, in Sarasota as well. Please stand up for our students. I wanna thank Mrs. Foreman for submitting public comment on this to the county commission. It's online if you wanna read her comments. Stand up for our kids. We are taking away their access to information. We are dumbing down our students. This is a huge concern for me as a parent and as a teacher. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes public comment for today. Well, we'll move to item number eleven, which is reports and presentations. Uh, first report presentation is the Audit Committee report to the Board. Uh, Mr. Daniels? Mr. Daniels, come on up.
Mr. Chairman, members, Superintendent, thank you for allowing me to be here today. This is kind of a learning process. When I walked into the July meeting, the first thing we heard was that the chair that had been there for many years was resigning rather abruptly. So, we juggled a little bit, got Mr. Blitsoe as the vice-chair in place. We made it through the meeting, headed to the next meeting in September, thinking, at least I was thinking, that he was gonna be the chair. It was all good. I walked in on the September meeting and it seemed like a railroad was going on and I was elected chair. So, forgive me if I'm a little rough or a little out of space. It's been a learning process, learning what you can and can't do, and just going forward. We have brought to you a recommendation that Cherry Beckett be retained for another year as the external auditor. They've got the people in place, they've got the associations with the county, and we believe that they've got the qualifications and the appropriate pricing to be your auditor. Reports have been done. We've also recommended approval of three internal audit reports from Carr-Riggs-Ingram, starting with the Manatee Technical College point-of-sale report. We found that things worked very well, very few deficiencies or errors, and want to commend them for having it. The next step we took was to look at the contract compliance situation here. Again, we found some minor discrepancies that are mentioned in the report, but nothing that came to of concern. The department is working well, taking care of things. The last one we have to bring forward to you is the Manatee Technical College Financial Aid. We looked at it actually in quite detail. We expanded it as we went along, just because as we learned things, we thought it would be better, and came again away with no exceptions or recommendations that are significant. There are some minor ones in there that you can look at at your leisure. The next report we looked at was the sales tax, SRTAX, report from CRI. It was performed well, the findings they came up with are very clear, but we ran into a question of what's appropriate for those funds to be spent on. And one of the items that's in there, or various items that are in there, appear to be ongoing, fees for IT, platform costs, other things that are year-to-year. It's not a new technology, it's not a new production, it's not providing new expanded access of any nature. It's paying for the system. So, our discussion was, is this or not qualified? Well, we also realized that without these platforms, without these software contracts, you don't run the schools, number one. Number two, you don't have the access to give the information to the kids because you don't have it. Now, if it's not paid for in the sales tax, SRTAX fund, it'll need to be coming out of general operations, where it had been before we had the sales tax. So, this is a question we are bringing forward to you to ask the board attorney if they might opine and tell us what should be in there. We're prepared to respond and come back with a recommendation in that report, once we get that information. It's just, are we stepping on toes? Are we stepping out of line? We looked very carefully at the language in the resolution and it's just enough of a gray area, we felt it was appropriate to get some guidance. We discussed a draft request for a proposal for internal audit services for this next year. This is one that kind of got out of due process in that you looked at it and passed approval before it came before our committee to discuss. And I'm kind of sorry that it happened because you went for the request for proposal instead of a rest for qualifications. And that locks you in a lot of times into doing a low bid. Not the best for the work, but if you're basing it on price, you take the low bid. And we would have recommended a request for qualifications to look at who's got the people, who's got the experience, who's got the know-how to do a good job for the school board, which is the other way around with proposal. We had some issues with inadvertent publishing of the proposal. And I'll take the responsibility for it. As we looked at it, we tried to put it up where the rest of the members could look at it and it got out to where the public could see it. And Carr-Riggs-Ingram, looking for our meeting, looking at the agenda, they pulled it down. We had a heavy level of discussion without them in the room as to how to deal with that. Ruth was there helping us. First opportunity or first possibility is just to disqualify them. They've been with us for quite a few years. I think they've done a very, very good job, but the easiest thing to do is just to say, "Well, you saw it, too bad, you're gone." The other thing, and this is what we're asking you to do, is to change it from a request for proposal to a request for qualifications. Again, you can look at qualifications of the individuals and the firms and base it on that. There's also some publication differences. They're much stricter on a request for proposal and the way it goes out on the solicitation liar. So, if you choose not to change it to a request for qualifications, our recommendation is to issue a one-year extension of the contract, which is allowed in the original contract with Carr-Riggs-Ingram, and go through this process a year from now, where you've got a clean, nobody can say it was unfair, nobody was saying, somebody got here and would hopefully have a much better chance to discuss what's involved in it with you before we go out there. And so, that's where that lasts. The last thing on my list is we, a lot of us watched a board meeting where you discussed the Audit Committee and what it is, what it needs to be, should it be here at all. Then we had a very long discussion in this last meeting. And just to tell you, we are an extension of you, your agents, to do what you want us to do. And if that means quit, we'll roll it up. If that means change it, we can do that. One of the things we discussed was the Citizens Oversight Committee that is similar to us and meets on the alternate months. And we discussed what they're looking at and the type of report they're getting and realized that it's essentially what these audit reports we're submitting to you are on a particular area. And I'll give you an example, it's a SRTAX, also through a resolution, and yet, instead of having a Citizens Committee looking at it the way the other resolution called for on the extra mill, we have it incorporated into the Audit Committee. I know that having more committees puts a lot more impact on you. One of the things we might do is combine that responsibility to the Audit Committee. Something to consider. It's up for you guys to tell us and to direct us, and we're looking for such direction. I'll open it up, Mr. Chairman, if it's all right for any questions?
Absolutely. Yeah. Let me open up that box, see if I have anybody. I don't have anyone that up to speak. Ms. Messenger, you put your hand up, so go ahead.
The button.
And I see it now. Oh.
I just keep hitting the button.
Oh. Like, this is going crazy. It was you.
That was me.
You going crazy.
Just a couple of comments. I appreciate that the work that the Audit Committee does. I know it's not an easy job, and so, I'm not asking you to go anywhere. I would be sad if you did. There was a comment made about the RFP versus the RFQ, and I don't know if you watched the board discussion about that piece, but when that, the concept of both of those came before us, it was presented as the RFP would consider the price, but it would not be the highest-weighted item because you guys would have the opportunity to set the weights for all of those pieces. So, we wanted the price to be a consideration, but certainly not in any way the largest consideration. We do believe the qualifications, at least, I feel like that's the conversation we had. I don't want to speak on behalf of the board unfairly, but, but we did say at that workshop that we wanted price to be considered, but we in no way wanted it to be the highest-weighted item. It would be a much lower-weighted item, but we wanted to make sure it was at least a considered item.
I thought, it's my understanding, the request for qualifications did ask for fees, proposals, so they could have been weighted and put into it.
That...
Just my understanding, over the years, of what one is versus the other, and the level of significance you place on each factor.
And that might be true. What was presented to us was, if we wanted to compare price, we had to do an RFP. And it could be weighted in different ways, and I agree with you, I don't think, I didn't get the impression that anybody sitting up here wanted that to be the determinant, but we did want it to be a consideration. And that was the intention there. So, I hope that that is a better explanation of that, and I'm hoping I'm not speaking out of turn saying that, but I do recall that as our conversation, and that it was how it was presented to us, that if we wanted that, and that was from, you know, our purchasing department, that we needed to make sure that it wasn't RFP so it could at least be a consideration, even though it would be a lower-weighted item, it will not be a top-weighted item. And I would defer to you to determine even those weights, although 0% would not be an option, but, you know...
I'm a cheap CPA, believe me, it wouldn't be zero.
Right. But I mean, it doesn't have to be 80% or 50%, it could be 20%. It doesn't have to, you know, the weight doesn't have to be the determining factor, but it should be a factor. And I, and you're right, in an RFQ, they do usually give price, but it's not necessarily a determining factor. It's not necessarily even a weighted factor from what I've seen in RFQs. And so, I think to ensure that it is at least a weighted factor, that's why, as it was presented to us, that's why we went with the RFP versus the RFQ. So, I hope that part is explained a little bit better. And the second part is, you talked about the millage referendum and the Citizens Financial Oversight Committee, and this board has talked about that several times, even before we made the Citizens Financial Oversight Committee. And at the time, the Audit Committee was not receptive to the concept of what you just proposed, so I'm...
I wasn't on the committee.
Well, no, but you know what? Opinions evolve as the seats change, right? And experience, you're right. Like, where this board is now is different than where this board was a couple of years ago, and probably the same is true for the Audit Committee and the Citizens Financial Oversight Committee. It evolves, right? So, I agree with your stance that it could be serviced in an audit that the Audit Committee then reviews. Should the Audit Committee be willing to take that up, then maybe that's a conversation this board can have. But in the past, that was not something the Audit Committee wanted to do. And then, we always came to the conversation of outcomes. The wording of that referendum also talks about outcomes, and the definition of outcomes has varied depending on whoever's been sitting up here. And it would probably vary depending on who's in your Audit Committee versus, what outcomes, what measurable outcomes can the Audit Committee give to us if they're just using the audit? They're gonna say, "Hey, the money was spent, how it's supposed to be spent." The Citizens Financial Oversight Committee ends up doing a lot of other pieces, a lot of other data. I don't know if we could ask an auditor to do those things, I'm not an auditor. Like, for instance, like the graduation rates and other things like that, and maybe that would come from the district and instead, and we could combine it. I don't know, that's something the board has to talk about. We've talked about it, like I said, I don't know how many times, so many times.
Your fault since I've been here.
Yeah, right? It's been a lot of times. It's been a lot, a lot of times. So, it's interesting now that the tenor of the Audit Committee has changed because that's just not the impression I have gotten in the past.
At this point, we want to be facilitators.
Right.
We want to help you have an easier decision made, help you weigh through the data, and provide it for you in a manner that you can understand it, and then make your decisions. We've had some discussion even before this last meeting about whose authority, and you know, one of the things I keep telling them is, we don't approve anything. All we can do is recommend to you who have the authority. So, I'm kind of, would encourage you that if you need to make a change to that Audit Committee or Citizens Oversight Committee structure to make it easier on you guys, tell us, don't ask. I mean, that's just, that's the command structure. If you, and I mean, we have to cooperate, we have to be willing, but I can tell you that the members that are on the committee now, we want to be helpers. We want to be what we can do to help you guys make the decisions that are appropriate for the children. And if that means us getting out of our comfort zone and looking at some things that we typically wouldn't, well, that's what we would need to do. We, a lot of us, though, are very experienced over the years with performance auditing, looking at programs, assessing outcomes, and giving reports that aren't necessarily financial in nature, but accomplishment in nature. You know, I've been auditing since 1979 in the public realm, and I can't tell you how many of those I've done. But included in a lot of federal programs is a requirement that that type of assessment be included under the yellow book. So, it's not rocket science to us. It's something we've looked at, the type of thing we've done before, gathering the data, arraying it for you, and putting it together so you can understand it.
So, perhaps that's something the board needs to discuss when we discuss the millage.
Sure.
Because to me, like, the Citizens Financial Oversight Committee was born out of the millage and they, to me, are together.
Absolutely.
So, I don't think that's even something we could decide today, but I appreciate that your willingness to do that.
We would also be glad, if you do have a workshop on it, to be present to answer questions or...
Sure, absolutely.
Ask, you know, whatever you need. Again, we're trying to be helpers, not hurters.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I'll just, real quick, just reiterate what Ms. Messenger said about the RFP/RFQ thought process. With that, so two things, they're presented that somewhat, we need to obviously discuss and take some action. The first thing, talk about the decision, and you, the Audit Committee's recommendation is to stay on a year with CRI and redo the RFP/RFQ.
Well, that's one of three.
Right. One of three options.
First option was to disqualify...
Correct.
...CRI and go forward.
Right.
Second option was to change it to a RFQ and go forward. The third option is to do a year with CRI and put it out.
I know that was presented to board members and discussed independently, not with each other. And Dr. Y Song, I don't know if that's something that, was that a, we need to put that on a workshop to decide that? Did you get a sense of what you felt like the board, I mean, I don't know where that lies now.
I think we, I mean, we have two options, Chairman. We can either bring an action item to the December board meeting and the board can then discuss and vote one way or the other, or we can put the topic on the next workshop, which would also be in December, so that there can be discussion among you, since this is your...
And then we wouldn't vote till January.
Right.
So, I mean, my question is, if we're not, if we don't vote till January, does that still stay in a timeframe, what the Audit Committee thought, purchasing, like, does that still leave us in a timeframe, or do we? Yeah, come on up.
Please.
Please.
Oh. Oh, did you have a thought? Did you, if you, I don't want to throw you on the spot. Yeah, yeah, I'm just wondering about our timeline, because we've obviously talked about this. We want to get our timeline early year, and so, is, is having a workshop in December and then voting item, action item, to determine what to do in January, second week of January?
Ask her to introduce herself.
It'd be a little bit...
Come on, yeah, introduce yourself, make sure you're in the mic, yeah, for us.
Ruth Groit, Director of Purchasing. It'll be a little bit tight. So, we would issue it then in January. We probably wouldn't have evaluation and interviews completely done until April, would be my guess. And then, the earliest it would probably come back to you would be in May, but more likely the first meeting in June. I'll try to tighten that up as much as we can, but it will, it will be tight.
Okay, okay.
Our concern and the reason we were trying to push it earlier is that it takes any firm, unless it's the repeat firm, timed at stage to get involved, and we were worried about a gap in coverage, the first part of fiscal '24, '25.
They want it done by July, yeah.
Yeah, so, that was our concern there.
Okay, so, we'll have to discuss that and put that on the board agenda. The second item that was a SRTAX, and this, the using, using that money to, for the IT. Mr. Dye, was there anything that you, I know, I know this has been opined before, previously, that it was okay, but is there anything else that you would want to, or...
I believe what was approved and opined on before was using it to pay the debt service for the construction of future schools. And it was agreed that that was there. We do have 12 million that have been paid on the debt service out of this year's report. No, I'm getting told.
I'm shaking my head, no. The opinion letter that Mr. Dye put forward was in response to a question about the purchase... The, um, the opinion letter that, um, Mr. Dai put forward was in response to a question about the purchase of the ERP system. Okay, in other words, you know, when, when it was being implemented. Now, my understanding is the Audit Committee is concerned about the recurring annual expenses for the license and for the, um, services. Services provided by, uh, by the outside contractor. Whether that is appropriate to be spent from the, um, it, you know, from, from, from the sales tax. And you were, you were very, you were spot on about the discussion between, or the consideration of the Audit Committee. Some feel that if it's not student-centered, student-focused technology, that, that
If it doesn't touch a student.
If it doesn't touch the student, if it just is the ERP system, you know, then, uh, then that, that's a different one. And they have requested to go back to Mr. Dai, um, for an opinion on that.
Right, and that's, I don't know if you're prepared for, to give me that today or not.
They want a letter.
Well, I
Or even discuss it, I mean, I don't know.
Yeah, well, some, someone sent it to me yesterday, I don't know who did, I appreciate whoever did. Um, but it was solely for techno, the technology issue. And I don't think I would change my opinion from when that was issued, which is that the terminology of, of additional technology didn't have any qualification, that it was for somehow tied to uh, use by students or some argument in that regard. It just literally said for additional technology. So it's, it's just the language that was used when the referendum passed.
Okay.
So I don't see, if anything's, nothing's been submitted to me to help make me change that opinion, unless there is some new argument that somebody has.
Yeah, no, I, that, that
Good with that.
I'm not sure, um, but obviously, you know, finalize it and write, I mean, we could definitely get back to, he can get back to the committee on that. Ms. Bray was lit up to some
Yeah, um, thank you so much for everything you do for the district. Um, I wanted to say, first of all, I want to ask Mr. Dai where he is on this, I don't want to put him on the spot either, but I'd like to know. Um, the state audits us every three years, am I correct? Yeah, the state does their, right, apart from us using an external auditor. Um, so, to me, I hold auditors to a very high standard.
You should.
Uh, and we should, because I know in the past, I've dealt with auditors. And you give them what they ask for, period, stop, whatever it is they ask for, you give it to them. I've also worked in a, an environment that said they get what I give them. So I've seen both sides, and the one side was really ugly, um, and I didn't support any of that. And so my question for that, in that role, was how long have you had that auditor? And it was several years, and they'll do what I tell them. And that was disturbing to me, to the point where I refused to sign documents as a bookkeeper, because I'm not going to put myself at risk for unhealthy habits. So when I learned of this, what I call breach of trust, is what that is to me, it's a breach of trust. So I hold auditors at a whole higher level, because I've seen the bad side of people, and people, you can give somebody a pass. When it comes to something like that, it's a little disturbing to me. Um, and you said the Audit Committee and Oversight, Citizens Financial Oversight. Uh, there was a topic, we've always talked about this, of blending that. I would suggest not so much blending that, but maybe some of the people on the Audit Committee could also serve on Oversight Committee. I don't think there would be any conflict of doing that. The same ethics apply, the same standards apply. The Audit Committee has been given any data they want, pre-fluid. With the CFAC, they have not, it's been total opposite, a lot of it was withheld. So most recently, they got a huge file from the millage, and they started going through that. And oversight is exactly what that is, oversight, seeing what is going on. So, um, I appreciate everything that you do. However, you guys were given more credibility than a CFAC was. And initially, the CFAC, and I was there, the entire team was getting anything and all that they could find to form a platform of how to report. Once people left, things wasn't so fluid, and it was asked for and not received in a timely fashion. Uh, and now they are getting it, and they're diving in it really deep, and I appreciate their work as well. But I don't know about, like I said, I hold auditors to a higher level, and, and I just think it's a breach of trust that they overstepped. And, uh, I don't know how we can get through this legally, we have to have an auditor or a saint, but I don't know. I mean, there's three questions.
Well, it's going to be either on the December meeting, we're gonna have to discuss that, or December workshop, whichever one we feel we need to discuss it, and how we need to discuss it, uh, with the options moving forward. I mean, that's the way, I mean, I, I don't think it is, we're not going to decide now, today.
May I ask a clarifying question? What do you, what was the breach of trust? What was the breach and by whom that you're talking about?
According to my briefing is where I felt that was
Who breached?
By CRI.
And how did they breach it?
I'm assuming by, you mean by, because it opened up the
Because they looked at something that was in the
Well, not only did they look at it, they put it, they offered input. From my understanding, I don't know, I know you're a CRI defender, but
No, I think, I think that we need, I think that, no, we absolutely appreciate the report, but he is only reporting, we are not
Right.
I don't think we need to discuss it today, I don't think it's a topic for today's discussion, we will have it on in a December workshop or December meeting, whichever Dr. Weisong and whoever else decides.
Let me just offer up one thing.
Yeah.
Coming up to a meeting, it's customary for CRI to look at what's on our agenda packet, make sure they're aware of it. It shouldn't have been there, and they wouldn't have seen it. So they did not go out of their way to do this. It was in the normal process that they take. Uh, you know, it was a situation, they are, we go with the RFP this year, that need to be disqualified, but it was not their doing. It was ours, the committee. I told, uh, my contact to publish it, not realizing what I was doing. Again, we're new, we're learning, uh, so if you want to point fingers, point them right here, because she published what I, I said, put it up there so our members can see it. And we may need to look at a non-public portal that we could trade documents
Right.
Before we get to a meeting, because we don't have one right now. And that would have, if we'd had that and been able to put that there, a non-public website that we can access, that would have solved the problem.
Ms. Foreman, you were lit up, and then Mr. Tatum.
Yes, um, thank you, Mr. Daniel, and thank you for stepping in as chair. Uh, thankless
All in told.
Thankless job, but I will attempt to thank you, um, but, uh, we do appreciate it and appreciate your wisdom and years of experience. Um, the sales tax report, um, just to give the board a little bit of background on that, one, you know, when, when you read the wording in the ballot language, it says, you know, we're going to do this for students, this for students, this for students, and purchase technology. So some may construe that to be technology directly impacting students. Um, others feel indirect is fine, so, um, you know, it's, it, whether that's an issue, we want to discuss, whether we want to take it up, whether Mr. Dai wants to consider that, you know, in the ballot language, not, not the, not the resolution, but the ballot, because that's what the public saw, um, that would be, that would be great. Um, RFP versus RFQ, we do need Mr. Dai to opine on whether switch, we could at this point switch to an RFQ, or whether that's, you know, um, playing games, kind of, you know, which, uh, I certainly would not be in support of that. I do want to point out to the rest of the board that one, CRI, it's not the IMA defender, it's just, it's, I think the Audit Committee is a defender, because they gave them a fabulous evaluation. Um, and, um, when it went out to CRI, when it went out for, for firms to, to bid on this, um, to qualify on this five years ago, there are only two firms that, that responded to that request. This is not an easy position to fill, an easy function. This is far different from external auditors, you talked about the auditors that come in every three years. That is the financial audit, these are internal auditors who are doing, who are evaluating whether our system of internal controls prevents us from having problems. And don't forget, you know, you want to talk about breach of trust, let's talk about ten years ago. Um, that, that was, there were lots of breaches going on. So, um, in, in Audit Committee and CRI and, you know, we have come so far, and, um, so. As far as the CFAC and their function, and I have been anti-merge. Uh, but Ms. Sellers had some very interesting points at the Audit Committee, I'm going to throw it at you, lay it on you. Um, nah, you don't even have to defend it. The, but the point, the points you made was that the Citizen Financial Oversight Committee is expected to do some audit procedures. They're expected to look at the materials, to look at the, look at what money is spent on, and make determinations. They're not, not so much making the determinations a typical auditor would, where they say, let me see the invoice, which that invoice could be very different from the, the line item that you are given. Um, and I thought that was extremely insightful. Now, we can't do it because it's on the ballot language that it would be a Citizen Financial Oversight. So we can't do it until the millage goes out on the next ballot, but we do need to consider it at that point. And I would anticipate that we're not talking about having non-CPAs on the Audit Committee. We are talking about having the Audit Committee oversee the internal auditor, whether it's CRI or successor, successor firm, to have them do the audit work, and then do a, do a report to, uh, to the Audit Committee. And, um, um, so I could come around on that one, I, I, I really could, and never thought I would say that, but
Somewhere Charlie is smiling.
Huh? But, but the point is, is that we, do we expect non-auditors to do auditing? Um, and, um, so I would, uh, I would love to take it up at the time that we, uh, that we draft ballot language, so, and that's it.
Mr. Tatum?
Morning, Mr. Daniels. So, in looking at what happened with CRI, I don't want to go too deep into it, but just for my edification at this point in the process. It was put out to the public, so any, any organization, any auditing firm that wanted to see that could have seen it, so I don't see how that's unfair somehow. But then they, they decided to feed back into the process, is that a, is that illegal? And maybe Mr. Dai could have put on that, or is it just kind of unethical, or is it just bad judgment, or?
The things that, and Ruth may clarify if I get it wrong, but when we put out a request for a proposal, it has to go through our solicitation website. It didn't. So that's, the process was wrong. For them to feed back, that's what they do with everything we do, I mean, that's why they're there. Uh, I'm sure Mark picked it up and said, boom, 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 here's some comments, uh, without thinking about it either. It was, uh
Well, the question, though, is, and again, I'm asking a legal question, is it, is what they did illegal, or is it just bad judgment, or it's just poor form, or, that's what I'm trying to get at. Like, why, why is it even an issue? I mean, I, we, we, the school board and then the Audit Committee shouldn't, shouldn't, not have put that out in the public, but once it got out in the public, wha, what's the, because I did have my own personal briefing, and I'm still, I'm still trying to work through that in my mind. Go ahead, Mr. Dai, I'll let you maybe answer that.
Uh, I was curious to see what the CPA thought on that. The, uh, so in purchasing, uh, you're protecting the public, the public's money, and that's why you go out for bids on things. Um, but you also got to have a fair process for vendors. And if you, if a vendor, potential vendor helps to create the RFP or the invitation, or whatever the document is, it, there's a number of cases that would, that would support that that's giving them an unfair advantage. And I'm not saying that's what happened here, I think it was an honest mistake by everybody. But certainly, it can be, it, it falls within that unfair advantage that one vendor may have over another. Does that make sense?
So is that, is there like a legal statute that applies there, or is it just that? It's not a good idea because it opens us up to potential litigation?
There is a statute that it falls within, um, and it's also a, it's also a case law that it falls within as well.
Precedent that would say that, once this happens, it kind of muddles, muddies the waters as far, if someone were to sue us later and said
Yes.
One company had an unfair advantage because they got to give input into the RFP process.
Yeah, and that's, and that's particularly bad, actually, um, that, because it falls within the situations that have happened over and over again in other places, and that are in the cases, that where a bid actually gets designed where just one firm kind of fits within it. So that's, that's the problem.
So maybe it wasn't anybody's nefarious intent, but the results are what they are, and unfortunately, we are where we are with it, so.
Yes, I think that's accurate.
That was clarifying, thank you, that's all I have.
Okay.
Mr. Chair. Before, before it comes to us again, I would request that all the board members be given not only a copy of that RFP, but also, uh, CRI's comments on it. So that they can understand what they were commenting on. It was not designing, you know, I, I'm not going to defend it.
I don't disagree, I don't disagree with that.
But I would like to, I would like us all to
We gotta clarify.
Yeah, Dr. Weisong, thank you. And then, are we still lit up, or Ms. Bray, did you lit up again?
Yeah, I'm just looking at our policy for the audit, and to Mr. Tatum's point, it's policy sixty-eight thirty-five, or code, policy six thousand five. Um, independent and objectivity, IA, internal auditor, independent auditor, we independent of activities it audits. All IA activities shall remain free of influence by any element in the district, including matters of audit, scope, procedure, frequency, timing, or report content. That's in our policy, so, um, that's what you're saying, if they would have that, if they put in, if they gave us input, then that's a policy that I would rule to.
Yeah, I think, I think it's important for us to see the input and
Right, I would like to see those documents, thank you, Ms. Foreman, for requesting that.
Sorry.
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, is there a concern that if we see whatever the feedback was, that it will influence the RFP or RFQ that we would then be supporting? Just a thought.
I mean, no, that, I never, didn't really thought, so you're saying if we did see the comments, we did see it, would it sway us one way or the other to say, hey, it was not, I mean, I still think that's part of the pro
I think the intention of us seeing it is to sway us, number one, and number two, will it sway us? And is that appropriate? And is that appropriate? I'm not saying it's.
Yeah, I don't know the comments. If the comments are like, hey, this looks great, I mean, then, you know what I mean? Like, then there's nothing there. Yeah, I, I don't, yeah, Ms. Foreman?
Yeah, because I have seen them, and they were, there was a section in there where the information, or the, the, the portion that they were referring to actually applied to external auditors, to the financial auditors, and not to internal audit, so it was entirely irrelevant, and that's what they were saying. So, I, to me, that is a fact-finding thing that I want you all to see. So, it's not to sway you, it's just, it's just some, someone saying there's a breach of trust, you need to see what it was.
Okay, just to point out that that, the purpose of what you just said is to sway somebody.
Facts. Yeah, those darn facts.
You mentioned Cherry and Beckett, keeping them for the, another year. Isn't there, was their contract already to next year anyways, right?
Yes.
Okay, that's what I thought.
Have the opportunity to accept their engagement letter for the year.
Gotcha, perfect, okay, great. Mr. Tatum?
I did have a question, I do have a question, then, about what Ms. Foreman said. So, if, all that stuff's in the public domain, is it not, that we just talked about, all the comments, it all went via email? So, I don't see why us seeing it as a problem, if it would, if it were to be provided to us individually, as long as we're not somehow getting it, talking about it. As far as Sunshine goes, it's all public domain, so I would like to have as much information as possible about the topic. But maybe you can enlighten me.
No, no, I'm not saying it's right or wrong. I'm asking if it's okay.
Yeah, that's what I'm wondering, too, is it's all in the public domain.
I would say, yeah, I mean, I think it was to me to the public, so the, the law firm over there believes that it's okay for us to see it. I mean, I don't think that it's an issue.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with that.
Okay. Thank you very much for your report.
Thank you.
And your answer to the questions.
See you next quarter.
Moving to item number 200, Reports and Presentations, 2324, School Accountability Update. Mr. Jensen?
Good morning, Chairman Cho, board members, Ms. Weisong. I'm here to give you a brief school accountability update. We've had some recent news, and there's also some upcoming milestones related to school accountability that I'd like to, like to share with you. You've probably seen this graphic before. This is the state's best transition timeline. This was the timeline that was laid out early about shifting to the, to the new standards, the benchmarks for excellent student thinking. And to the state's credit, they've stuck to this timeline, and so has Manatee County Schools in following it. And so, you can see that we, we, you know, launched early with professional development. We've worked through the last three years, and we're all, now we're kind of living in that bottom-right quadrant with the new ELA and math statewide assessments, and that's what was delivered last year with the FAST assessments, PM 1 through 3 last year, and of course, our students took the first progress monitor at the beginning of this year. But with new state assessments, there has to be kind of one final, one final piece to complete the puzzle with them, and that's what I'm going to share today, which is the standard-setting process. And that's what's been going on behind the scenes over, over the last few months. And that's really the process by which, with these new test items, so that the state obviously designs new test items that are aligned with the standards, students take those new test items, and then the state, working with, with educators and stakeholders, kind of draw the lines for the cut scores essentially. What makes, you know, what, what score range defines a student who gets a level 1 versus level 2, versus level 3, 4, and 5. And so, those are those achievement levels that, that we have descriptors for, which I'll share with you in a second. And it's, it's required by law anytime we're implementing new standards and new assessments. And it's a pretty robust process. First, there's something called achievement level descriptors. That's designed alongside those new standards. It's essentially the, the kind of narrative statements about what students are expected to be able to do. And then educators from across the state come together on these educator panels, and they go through the test items, kind of from easiest, the most, the most frequently correct answers, all the way to the hardest ones, and they kind of, based on their expertise in reading the test items, decide where they believe the lines should be drawn. All of that feedback is collected, it's taken to a reactor panel. Those are different stakeholders from around the state who look at that educator feedback, and then, and kind of react to it, and decide whether they agree or disagree with those cut score determinations. It goes for public input, and eventually goes for a commissioner's recommendation and a proposed rule. And that goes through legislative review and is eventually adopted. And that was actually adopted on October 18th. And so, we do have new scale scores for the new, for the new FAST assessments. And we still are using five achievement levels, so they'll still be level 1 through level 5, like our families are used to here in the school district of Manatee County. They've changed what they're calling those five levels a little bit, so you can see the old language on the left-hand side, and you can see the new language on the right-hand side, but it's approximately the same, and also, it, it retains that a level 3 and above is considered proficient. Then what the state is going to be doing is they're going to be retrofitting test scores. And so, they're going to be taking the students' scores that they got on PM 1 this year, and the scores they got last year on the FAST assessments, and they're going to be basically rescaling them to the new cut scores essentially. And so, they'll be, they'll be essentially reclassifying students into the, to the new scale scores. And this is an example, this is kind of a sample, it's not all of the grade levels, but just to kind of show you the change in scale score between the old FSA scale and the new FAST scale, you can see the FAST scale is about 100 points lower. That doesn't mean it's easier, it doesn't mean the students are scoring lower, it's just kind of the numerical value of the, of the scale that they're using. Yes, sir?
That's a real quick question.
Sure.
Were, were we, the past two years, we, we didn't have this FAST scale, correct?
Correct.
So, when we were looking at, as a teacher, evaluating my student, were we having them look at the FSA scale, or just not a scale at all?
Correct. So, when your students took the FAST assessment, and they got a level 2 on the FAST assessment, it was being u, the FSA score, the scale was being used for that.
So, we were, I mean, I don't want to say that education is a game, but essentially, we were playing a game, not knowing the rules, or the out and how, everything was going to be scored and outcome. If I shot this shot, it was a 2-pointer, 1-pointer, or 3-pointer. And then now, they're going back and saying, hey, you made that, you thought it was a 2, but now it's really a 1-pointer.
That's a great analogy. So, basically, after.
Again, I don't want to say education's a game, but just, that was just my analogy.
After the game's been played, they redrew the.
Thought the score was, you were winner.
Recalculated the.
Now you're a loser. Okay, I just want to make sure, clarify.
And that's what we'll be talking about here, and essentially why I'm sharing this, because there'll be a few key upcoming data releases from DOE that I think need a little context around this. So, these will be kind of a representative sample. Again, the lower scale doesn't mean it's easier or anything, it just is a different numerical value for the scale they're choosing. So, there's, there's going to be two big pieces to this, that this has implications for. The first is informational baseline grades from last year. And this is what you were talking about, Chairman Cho, with the recalculating the score after the game has been played. They're essentially kind of retrofitting the, the student scores from last year into this new scale, and then they're going to use the school data based on that new analysis to release informational baseline grades. And those will be released in winter, or anticipating December. And it's essentially school grades for last year, but they are limited in their utility because, one, it's the first year of assessment, so we don't have any learning gains data. And also, we're already halfway through the 2324 school year, and so, we're seeing kind of a, a portion of the picture from the past, but we're not seeing a, a complete portrait. And it also, you know, it'll, it'll be important for our reference to kind of give us an idea of where we're headed, but it, but we're, I mean, our, our students are working hard, our teachers are working hard, our school administrators are working hard on making a difference this year. And so, whereas this will be interesting information, certainly it'll be something we reflect on in, in the instructional departments, and, and kind of analyze to, to do as much with as possible. This is, you know, information that, that has limited utility when it comes to actually making decision-making at the school level for this year, right? And to kind of show you the difference between what these informational baseline grades will be like, and, and the full grading formula, like I said, there's no learning gains possible because it's the first year of the assessment. And so, really, you're only going to have, in these informational school grades, which will be released in the next month or so, you'll only have the achievement, or the number of proficient students factoring into your elementary school grades. And then, same for middle and high, along with a few of the other components, like acceleration and graduation rate. But what that means is, some schools might be advantaged by that, right? So, if you have a large number of students who enter your school already proficient, your school's probably going to benefit from looking at an achievement-only model. Whereas, if you are a, a school that has a large number of students come in, not at proficiency yet, but you do a lot of work at your school to get those students to make learning gains and move them towards proficiency, you actually might be hurt by this informational grade model, because those learning gains and that work isn't going to be captured on that particular portrait of the school grades. And so, this is the, the formula, after the, all these scores have been retrofit, they released these informational school grades December-ish, winter. That's, that's what we'll see. It'll be based on achievement only, and it'll be kind of a portrait of, a limited portrait of last year. Ultimately, though, now that we have these new scores, and our students are going to be taking Progress Monitor 2 in December and in January, that'll really be moving us towards the full implementation of the school accountability formula, which is what you see here on this slide. And that's the, the full 800 points for elementary, 1,000 K8, 900 for middle, and 1,000 for high. And it's, it captures both, both achievement, including third-grade reading achievement, as well as all the learning gains, because now we'll have two years of data on the new scale, as well as the acceleration and graduation components. And that's what we'll receive at the end of the 2324 school year, and that'll be kind of the more comprehensive school accountability formula that we're used to, and should more accurately kind of represent the progress made at each school, too. And this is really what we're focused on right now, instructionally, as we're working with schools, and I know as our, as our principals are working hard, our teachers are working hard, and our students are working hard, to, to make sure we're making those learning gains, and we're, we're working towards success on this for this upcoming year. And with that, if you have any questions or comments, I'd be happy to assist.
Ms. Bray is led up to speak.
Thank you for this. This is so great. I reviewed this for my briefing, and I reviewed it again yesterday, and then looking at it today. This is probably the most comprehensive, easy-to-read guide to how kids are tested. That's what it is to me. It's like, oh, wow, this is so simple. I know where they changed the scales on here, and that was the one thing I was going to ask, is that lowering the standard expectation, but it's just a different measurable that still falls in the same kind of, they're just doing it differently. So, I'm glad you brought that up, that it is not lowering the standard because of the number, it's just the way they're calculating it. I think this is great. We just got to make sure DOE doesn't change the testing again. And that's always been, I mean, just, yeah. And, and I will advocate all the way to Tallahassee for that, because it's so hard to go from one set of, this is how we're going to test, to a new set. I mean, it's just like night and day difference from what I've learned being on this board now a year. So, I just wanted to say that, thank you for putting this together. I think it's very, it's a how-we-test-easy guide for me. And I didn't realize that there was this whole wraparound that you did on Slide 4, how that actually takes place. And it clarifies a lot of stuff, but look where it ends up. State Board of Education, so that's who we need to make sure, look, we're doing great things here, but every time you change something, it throws everything in disarray. So, I just wanted to say.
I have to give a credit to Evan McCarthy and our amazing assessment accountability team here, who, who really are the magic makers, who crunch the numbers and simplify the data so that even I can understand it.
Yeah, it's great. This is just great. I, I just wanted to say thank you for that.
And you even put in the report that 1415 went from FCAT to FSA. So, within 10 years, we were switching again. And I'm okay with evolving and changing. My, my concern, my plea to the DOE would just be, and legislators, governor, whoever, was, let's make sure all boxes are checked before we roll it out, right? So, I'm great, I'm fine with changing standards, doing different things, but we kind of piecemealed this. We said, hey, we're going to change standards, but we don't know how we're going to grade you, then we're going to get, take grades, and then we don't, now we're going to change scales. So, you know, my, my plea would just, let's get everything all rolled together before we roll it out, right? And, and, and that way, you know everything, and that even means doing some pre-questions, right? If we know we're going to switch, let's do some of those questions that we're going to test for next year, those pre-questions, because that's where then you can now look back and say, hey, you didn't know this, but you took some questions in this last test, and that's kind of how we're going to adapt. So, it's just the timing of it and how we roll it out, not necessarily changing. I'm okay with changing standards and doing those things, but it's how we do it, and when we implement it, going, I mean, that's not our decision up here. Ms. Tatum was led up, and then Ms. Foreman?
Good morning, Mr. Jensen.
Mr. Tatum.
On page 7, please, of the presentation. So, we don't have grades yet for our schools from last year, right?
Correct.
Okay. So, that's, so what's going on here is there's some mash, when I say machinations, that could have a negative connotation, but there are some administrative changes that are being worked so that the 20, on bullet number 2, 2022, 23 school and district grades will be informational baseline grades. What does that term, informational baseline grades mean?
It is, to my, to my best knowledge, kind of a state term that's meant to be, this is our, our first year, we understand it is not the comprehensive portrait, and thus, it kind of ties into that second sentence under that bullet, which is that schools and students won't be unduly penalized. So, like, for example, if a student scored a level 3 on last year's, like, on last year's Progress Monitor 3, and then they do the retrofit, and the student was right on the cusp, and when they, they kind of recalculate, that student moves into the level 2 range, they're still counting that student as a level 3. They're not causing any students to go down. They're doing the same for schools, like, schools won't enter turnaround status or anything based on the results of the grades for this year.
And if, if an individual student goes down, that can have a negative effect on them. I'll give an example, and maybe you could give me other ones. For instance, they have to go into like remedial reading, or something like that, and then that takes away some of their elective options. Is that, is that one example? Or, I mean, what happens if a student would go from like a 3 to a 2?
Well, there's certainly, you know, kind of thresholds by which we, we provide additional academic interventions, like maybe a reading course, or reading interventions. I don't anticipate that the recalculation will change the score so dramatically that a, a large number of students would need those. But again, it's kind of that hold harmless approach right now, which is, you know, we're kind of taking the, the student's best progress on either the, the old scale or, or the new scale, and moving forward with that.
Okay. And what is the VAM score at the bottom of page 7? No VAM scores in 2022.
I'm sorry, that's the value-added model. So, that's the, the kind of growth model that we use in conjunction with the teacher evaluation model to calculate kind of a teacher's contribution to learning. It's part of the annual evaluation process.
Or the teachers?
Correct.
Has nothing to do with school grades?
Administrators. No, so this is, this is part of the teacher evaluation model and the administrative evaluation model, and it really looks at learning gains over the course of the year, how a teacher contributed to student learning, and because there are no learning gains, we're unable to calculate that.
Okay. And so, we should get the, the school grades for the 2022, 2023 school year in early winter, and they'll just be baseline grades. And then there's a new testing regime, so to speak, and then our students will take that, those tests in PM 3 later in the spring, and then those grades will be used to calculate school grades for the 2023, 2024 school year. And then those grades will quote-unquote not be informational, but then they will, they will not be hold harmless anymore, starting with the, the grades that we get for the 2023, 2024 school year. I'm just checking my understanding to see if I have this all straight.
Absolutely correct.
Okay, great, good, all right. That's all I have then, thank you. All right.
I believe Ms. Foreman was next, and then Ms. Messenger.
As far as the 2023, 24 school grade components, do we know the weight that they are going to be given these? For example, graduation rate, college and career, middle school acceleration compared to the achievements scores?
They should all still be 100-point categories, so each one of those categories.
They will all be equal?
Correct.
Okay, all right. For learning gains, okay, a, a teacher last year. A teacher last year who, at the beginning of the year, assessed their students, whether it's this assessment or their, you know, or at that time it was iReady, they know whether their student has had gain for the year. Is that correct? Come the end of the year, they can look at it and say, this student went from second grade level of reading to fourth grade.
So we use a variety of, so of course there's the fast assessments, which are kind of the state progress monitor for us. We also use, you know, we've used iReady in the past, we have Lexio, we have our benchmark assessments, we have internal assessments also that we use to kind of track student progress along the way. So as a teacher, right, I'm kind of looking at that like formative data that's going on throughout the year to make those instructional decisions, and I'm tailoring my instruction to make sure I'm supporting student learning throughout the year. So I can look at, you know, an assessment early in the year maybe I gave, an assessment later in the year, and I can make some determinations about the progress my student has made. When the state is calculating learning gains, they're really looking at Progress Monitor 3 from the prior year to Progress Monitor 3 of the current year. And so that's the two assessment that the state's using, and then they're using the cutoff scores and the kinds of bucket scores, the cutoff scores within the cutoff scores to determine whether students made learning gains.
When, one of the things, there are several things about, you know, school letter grades that offend me, but when it comes out, whatever our letter grade may be, okay, there's a big component missing, and that's the learning gains. Is there a way that we can promote what our, I wouldn't even say promote, just disclose what our gains were, you know, not on FAST, but from our own assessments? Is that possible?
I think that's a smart idea. I know we've already engaged with Mr. Barber, we've talked about this in Cabinet some, to think about, you know, how we help parents understand this data and this data release, right? Because it's one of those things, you know, personally, that I don't want us to overreact to either positively or negatively, right? Because it could come out and it could be very good for us, and I don't want us, you know, to overreact to that in a positive way. And if it comes out, we have some schools that aren't performing as well in this kind of informational grades model, I don't want us to overreact to that either. So I think it's a, I think it's a communicate, we have to really thread the needle regarding our communication strategy so our parents are really informed, but they also, you know, understand, and I think this presentation is part of that communication strategy as well, help our parents understand the utility in this, but also that it's not a comprehensive portrait of their child or their school.
Well, yeah, and the parents obviously need and will have that information about their child, and it's not just parents, it is the community. Community looks at it and says, we're a C, you know, district, and that disturbs me. If all of the issues and all of the disclosure and an understanding of what is, goes into making up that grade, that C level grade, but that's something for you guys to figure out, and God bless Evan McCarthy, you know?
Dr. Weisong, wonder if that's a...
Mrs. Foreman, I think that's exactly the point of why we wanted to do this presentation I would argue that, given the timing of this release, the, this baseline informational grade is more noise than it is signal, right? And that's good and, right, good, we may have some schools that are celebrating an A, that we don't want them to rest on those laurels, we need them to keep going, especially with non-proficient readers. Then we could get some news that looks bad because this is only half the model, and we need to not let that distract our educators and our principals from what they need to be doing. The PM 2 data is a much better signal of how things are going than a school grade for last year's performance. And so I think, board members, my ask of each of you is within your networks, whenever this data is released, that we're just educating people that it's an incomplete equation, it's just a data point. We have far more accurate focus data points, and we'll be bringing those to the board. In January, we'll bring you the math PM 2 data to look at, followed by the ELA data as soon as the students are done taking those assessments. That data, whether good, bad, ugly, or whatever, is what our principals and our teachers are going to be making adjustments based on, not based on last year's baseline information data. So I just think all of us in our networks need to be educating other community leaders, parents, that this is more noise than signal.
And even perhaps, I'm sorry to jump in.
No, no.
But it's great conversation, even perhaps in the SAC meetings and things like that, that we, you know, make sure that we're going, and I mean, I agree with you, I think last year's number, this, it's about PM 2 more so than, but I agree with you, I mean, the perception is that, you know what I mean? Were you done?
Yes, well, just one other point, observation, and that is by changing the level of scores, if I'm not in the standard setting, scale score differences, if I'm not mistaken, they went down, the scores went, a test is worth less number of points than it was under FAST or under FSA. So like, for example, the ELA went down from, according to this, it looks like a maximum score of 360 under FSA and 260 under ELA. So if you change that metric, it's going to, it's not comparable, you know?
Agreed, no, agreed.
Just saying.
Hundred percent. Ms. Messner?
I just want to agree that you won't say it, but I will, that it is a game. And I will also agree with you that, you know, if you can talk Tallahassee into not changing it for, I don't know, at least five years, that'd be great for students and teachers. I was thinking about how on here it talks about the tests changing, but that doesn't really take into account how many times the standards have changed, because there was FCAT, which was the Sunshine State Standards, right? Then there was FCAT 2, which was the Next Generation Sunshine State Standards. Then it was Common Core, which was FSA. Then it was Florida Standards, which, whatever, that was also FSA. And now we've got the best standards, which is another test, right? So I'm just, it's not just the test changing, which is shenanigans, it is also the standards continually changing, and now also the score, right? So that's just, whatever, it's a game, I like your words. You won't say it, I will. I have a question about the VAM, though. What is the district going to use for the VAM since you don't have the data for VAM?
So I would have to follow up with you because we actually have kind of a model that I can share with you. It's not secret or proprietary.
Right.
It'll show you kind of how all of those things are factored and what assessments go into those factors by grade level, and I can...
Okay. Because you're going to have to use something.
Oh, well, it actually won't be part of the, it won't be weighted into the teacher evaluation piece.
Okay. Okay. So their evaluation is going to be based on observations, not any scores at all?
I will have to follow up with you and make sure that is entirely correct. I think it's going to depend on the grade and subject and those types of things, because different grades, different subjects, different assessments, right?
Yeah.
So there's going to be different pieces. So like I said, I can review that data.
I just remember in years past when I was a teacher and we'd switch from one to the other, even though they'd be like, there's no VAM, there was still something the district did that was associated with a test in, that did go into, not, their state VAM, because it's not a state VAM, but went into what the district did, so I was just curious. I have one question because I want to fully understand what you're presenting to us. On Slide 6, where you show how the scales changed, I'm thinking now as a parent where my daughter took PM 1, okay? And whatever number she got, let's say she got 200, okay? If she got 200 on PM 1, are you saying that that number will change? Or are you saying that is the number and here's the new scale? Do you know what I'm saying? Does that number, is that number the number, or is that going to change now, too?
This is going to require a little Evan McCarthy magic, but, and I'll follow up with you on the exact way those scores are changing. I believe both the score changes and the scale changes.
Okay. I would think that that would make sense because what was presented to me as a parent is your child is at level X based on that score, but that's based on really this FSA scale number. So I just wanted to know how that will affect what's even given to parents. And also as a parent, I would think, okay, if my child got 200 on PM 2, and then that was redone, or their next time they now got 100, but really it means the same thing, how will that be explained to parents? Because I might look at that and go, you need to sit down and do a lot more work because you went down 100 points, but they really necessarily didn't, right? So I'm just trying to understand how that's going to work for parents.
I also think that's where that parent portal that's provided by the state really comes into utility. So parents can access that through Focus, through us, by clicking on that button, and it'll take them to their student's results. And it will show, once especially these scores are retrofitted, it'll show the scale score, it'll show the student's level, and it will provide the parents with kind of context, how that student scored relative to their peers, and it'll also provide that parent, which is my favorite part, with kinds of things you can do at home to support your students' learning based on how they perform. And I think that's a nice opportunity for parents, just like, what can I do to support what's happening at school? So I think that that's a good place to start for parents if they want maybe greater context than just like a raw score, which honestly, you know, doesn't mean much other than how we place kids in the bands for levels.
Right. Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else is led up to speak? Appreciate it. Ford, do your next one.
That was great, thanks.
It moves us to the consent items. Item number 12, Superintendent Weisong.
Thank you. I recommend approval of the consent agenda for November 14, 2023.
So moved. I'll second.
We have a motion and a second.
Okay.
Thank you all very much. We'll go ahead and vote on the agenda, the consent agenda item, and that passes 5 to 0. We are at our hour and a half, so we're going to take a seven-minute recess. Seeing none, I'll say it one more time, anyone in the bathroom or out in the hallway, public,
Seven-minute.
our public hearing will be coming to a close. All right, we closed the public hearing. I'm going to reconvene the regular meeting of the School District of Monty County and move to item number 16, which is our new business. And item number one, Superintendent Weisong.
Thank you, Chairman. I recommend approval of the budget amendments for September 2023.
So moved.
We have a motion?
I will second.
And a second. And Ms. Sellers, floor is yours.
All righty. So this month, we had 701 budget amendments. Out of that, there were nine chart strings that were over a million dollars, so I was going to brief you on those today. They were impacting three specific funds, the general fund, capital fund, and the special revenue fund. One of the items in the general fund had to relate to the mental health program. This was 1.2 million. This was to budget for the student service, support services contract. It was basically just moving it for the school year from one function to another. In the revenue, there were a couple of chart strings that one was for the interest on anticipated investments of 2.5 million. And there was also a transfer of expenditures. This is related to the prior year speech and language pathologist contracted expenditures. And it was moved to, from the special revenue fund over to the ESER fund. And that was to be included in the ESER grant that ended September 30, 2023. So that was actually part of, it's one of the expenditures that you see hidden incorporated inside of the quarterly report for ESER that will be coming up next. Related to the capital fund, we had, out of the sales tax proceeds, there was an increase in the MTC firing range costs. And so there was a 1.53 million increase. And basically, we were correcting from projects, from one project to another to be able to capture the increase in those anticipated costs. And also related to impact fees, there was a correction in activity related to a project where construction services and the design, because they keep those two separate. And then the last one related to special revenue fund, we had related to our federal cash advance revenue in Title IV Part A grant. The revenue received, it was about 1.1 million, and this was just expenditures loaded to a cost center across multiple objects. And then one last one was related to the SR3 expense, and this was for 2324 school year. This is related to salary distribution costs for the counselors from one cost center to the school, some school cost centers. And that is the summary of the budget amendments over a million. Anybody have questions?
Let me get to my speaker, Ms. Forman.
Yes. You said that it's a million and a half increase on the firing range. Is that because of increased construction costs?
Construction costs for building and road.
If I'm not mistaken, this is unusual for us to having to absorb construction cost increase because aren't they budgeted at the very beginning?
They are. It has come in at a higher expense than we had initially budgeted. So that calls for the the increase in that, that change in that budget.
All right.
And and it was just as they're going through, when we have our capital review of the projects, it was determined that there was a need to make sure we had the increase covered. This is still budgeted, but this is the way that anticipation is falling out.
Roughly, what was the total amount of the budget for the firing range?
Five million? Do I have five million right? Five million.
I want to say five, I think.
So that's quite a percentage increase.
Increase.
You want to ask Mr. Rinaldi if you may have more information than Ms. Sellers, maybe what the increase was and I don't agree to me 20%, I agree.
Yeah, that's, she's asking the exact same question I was going to ask.
Good afternoon, or good morning. There was, there's two elements to this. One is the access roadway. When we relocated the site at the request of the neighbors, we had to put an access roadway in. We had estimated that that roadway would be around $850,000. Right now, it's coming up to right under, right around a million dollars. So there's some additional site work that we needed to do that wasn't anticipated when we put that budget together. The rest of the issues are material escalations. And that $5 million budget is about almost a year and a half old right now. And we've seen 20% when it comes to construction material costs at this point.
Okay, now, we're sharing the firing range with the city.
With the city of Bradenton, and their their part of the project is that they donated the land as their part of the project for both the firing range as well as for the access road, too.
Did the, did their donation include the access road?
It does now, yes.
So shouldn't they absorb the increase in the cost of the access road?
Well, really, their portion of it is is more of a land, land-based than than it is improvement-based, where we're responsible for doing any improvement. So it's, they're not charging us additional for that for that land for the roadway. There's no cost there, but it is for the improvements that we're doing, which is the road.
We see the typically kind of kickback from sales, from tax, you know, coming back from it. Do we see any, do you anticipate any seeing anything like that coming back? So it's not all, it's not the full one point or what, 6.5 now?
Yes, yeah, we'll be, we'll be running this project through our sales tax program, so we will be
A smaller amount, we may not get a whole lot back, but I mean, we're
There will be money coming back, yes.
And is this a guaranteed, like, this is a max price, right?
We were working on, right now, the contractor and the architect, as a matter of fact, meet this afternoon to finalize their guaranteed maximum price. So we're hoping that we can bring it to you in short order. I don't know if I'll get it by the December deadlines, but at least in January, we'll be, we'll have the final cost.
So should we be putting off this vote until we have guaranteed that this is maximum price?
At this point right now, these are, we're working with the numbers that they've given us based on 90%, 95% drawings.
But if they're not willing to guarantee it?
Well, they, but they will be. I mean, the the meeting just happened to correspond with today's meeting where we were trying to finalize it.
Typically, I mean, this is a little disturbing to me that we're actually doing a a journal entry for over a million dollars. Typically, it's something you're doing for, okay, that's in the wrong account, it should have been this account. To me, this should have been a change order. It's almost backwards to me. We've already, you're moving the money, but it's not on the original project. So we're going to have to modify the project, bring it back to us, and say, this is what we need to do now to change it.
No, the, right now, we have $850,000 in the five-year budget that you have approved at this point. What we're seeing is an escalation of about 200 to 250,000 dollars just for the roadway as one piece, and then you've got the building and all the other improvements associated with it. So that's why we're thinking we're going to be about 1.5 million dollars over what the budget is as of today.
Okay, I just think that's a little high, but I mean, I don't, if I remember right, that budget had a guarantee maximum price on it, a project in front of me. That's just a little odd to me that it's that much more that we got to move. And then to the, you had said for the ESER, we moved some money from one account to another to close out the ESER for September.
Those are expenditures that are fit the function and object on the award. They happen to have been spent in another fund that wasn't in ESER, but we did not want to have to lose the ESER funds. So we ensured that it was an allowable expenditure, and the amendments are with DOE now for them to approve that. And so since the, so but they have, they all occurred before September 30, 2023. So we just needed to make sure, we wanted to get those balances down to zero and not leave anything in the ESER pot for ESER 2.
So ESER 2 is done now.
Yes, so it finished, and and actually, the deadline to make sure these, the reports and amendments are in is is November 20, 2023. So we're in that last window, but they are amendments that are with DOE now, and this is capturing, these are the amendments capturing, just moving the costs that are essentially allowable that were spent basically in another fund, moving it into that fund, so we get credit for it, so we don't have to send it back to DOE.
Okay.
Yes.
All right, that's all I have.
Mr. Dye?
Thank you, Chair. I worked on this project since the beginning. I just want to give the board some additional background on on why the the overage occurred, because it's kind of unusual. The, and it's no one's fault with the with the staff. The, when this thing started, the city has a section of land way out east on 64, and they were using it as a as a range for their for their police department. And they offered to allow the the school district to build a facility on their land that the district could run the programs out of for the law enforcement, you know, programs at at the technical college. And so that's how it began, and the the site on the school, on the city property was to the very north or the very west of the properties where the they had traditionally used. And that was, that was the intended place of the new facility. But the adjacent owner objected to it being located there because of noise or, you know, whatever, and wanted it located to the other side of the property. And that's after the, I think, the initial calculations were made of what it was going to cost.
Okay.
And in addition, the adjacent owner owns the access road from State Road 64 that goes more directly to this parcel. There's other access to it, but you go all the way further east on the Maia Kua Chula Road, and it actually adds almost 45 minutes from downtown to get to the property. You got to go so far east, and then you got to double back. And so the city, they didn't like moving the facility to where the adjacent owner wanted it because it uses up an awful lot more of their property. So they thought it lowered the value of their remaining property. And and this adjacent owner, his other request to not object to the whole thing was that the was that this access road that he owns from 64 get paved. So the paving of that access road got added to the project. And that's the extra $850,000, because it's a it's a long access road, it's a couple of miles, I think. So that's, so that money came
For the, the increase in that, that change in that budget.
All right.
And, and it was just, as they're going through, when we have our capital review of the projects, it was determined that there was a need to make sure we had the increase covered. This is still budgeted, but this is the way that anticipation is falling out.
Roughly, what was the total amount of the budget for the firing range?
Five million? Do I have five million right? Five million.
I would say five, I think.
So that's quite a percentage increase.
You want to ask Mr. Rinaldi if you may have more information than Ms. Sellers, maybe what the increase was and...
Right.
I don't agree to me twenty, twenty percent.
Yeah, that's, she's asking the exact same question I was gonna ask. It's not acceptable.
Good afternoon, or good morning. There was, there's two elements to this. One is the access roadway. When we relocated the site at the request of the neighbors, we had to put an access roadway in. We had estimated that that roadway would be around eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Right now, it's coming up to right under, right around a million dollars. So there's some additional site work that we needed to do that wasn't anticipated when we put that budget together. The rest of the issues are material escalations. And that five million dollar budget is about almost a year and a half old right now. And we've seen twenty percent when it comes to construction material costs at this point.
Okay, now, we're sharing the firing range with the city.
With the city of Bradenton. And their, their part of the project is that they donated the land as their part of the project for both the firing range as well as for the access road, too.
Did the, did their donation include the access road?
It does now, yes.
So shouldn't they absorb the increase in the cost of the access road?
Well, really, their portion of it is, is the, more of a, a land, land-based than, than it is improvement-based, where we're responsible for doing any improvement. So it's, they're not charging us additional for that ro, for that land for the roadway. There's no cost there, but it is for the improvements that we're doing. Which is the road.
We see the, typically kind of kickback from sales, from tax, you know, coming back from it. Do we see any, do you anticipate any seeing anything like that coming back? So it's not all, it's not the full one point, or what, six point five now?
Yes, yeah, we'll, we'll be gun, we'll be running this project through our sales tax program. So we will be...
A smaller amount, we may not get a whole lot back, but I mean, we're...
There will be money coming back, yes.
And is this a guaranteed, like, this is a max price, right?
We, we're working on, right now, the contractor and the architect, as a matter of fact, meet this afternoon to finalize their guaranteed maximum price. So we're hoping that we can bring it to you in short order. I don't know if I'll get it by the December deadlines, but at least in January, we'll be, we'll have the final cost.
So should we be putting off this vote until we have guaranteed that this is maximum price?
At, at this point right now, these are, we're, we're working with the numbers that they've given us based on ninety percent, ninety-five percent drawings.
But if they're not willing to guarantee it?
Well, they, but they will be. I mean, the, the, the meeting just happened to correspond with today's meeting where we were trying to finalize it.
Ms. Bray.
Typically, I mean, this is a little disturbing to me that we're actually doing a, a general entry for over a million dollars. Typically, it's something you're doing for, okay, that's in the wrong account, it should have been this account. To me, this should have been a change order. It's almost backwards to me. We've already, you're moving the money, but it's not on the original project. So we're gonna have to modify the project, bring it back to us and say, this is what we need to do now to change it.
No, the, right now, we have eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars in
Right.
the five-year budget that, that you have approved at this point. What we're seeing is an escalation of about two hundred to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars just for, the roadway is one piece. And then you've got the building and all the other improvements associated with it. So that's why we're thinking we're gonna be about one point five million dollars over what the budget is as of today.
Okay, I just think that's a little high, but, I mean, I don't, if I remember right, that budget had a guaranteed maximum price on it, on the project in front of me. That's just a little odd to me, that it's that much more that we gotta move. And then to the, you had said you, for the ESR, we moved some money from one account to another to close out the ESR for September.
Those are expenditures that are fit the function and object on the award. They happen to have been spent in another fund that wasn't in ESR, but we did not want to have to lose the ESR funds. So we ensured that it was an allowable expenditure, and the amendments are with DOE now for them to approve that. And so, since the, so, but they have, they all occurred before September thirty, twenty twenty-three. So we just needed to make sure, we wanted to get those balances down to zero and not leave anything
Right.
in the ESR pot for ESR two.
So ESR two is done now?
Yes, so it finished, and, and actually, the deadline to make sure these, the reports and amendments are in is, is November twenty, twenty twenty-three. So we're in that last window. But they are amendments that are with DOE now, and this is capturing, these are the amendments capturing, just moving the costs that are essentially allowable, that were spent basically in another fund, moving it into that fund, so we get credit for it, so we don't have to send it back to DOE.
Okay.
Yes.
All right, that's all I have, thank you.
Mr. Di.
Thank you, Chair. I, I worked on this project since the beginning. I just want to give the board some additional background on, on why the, the overage occurred, because it's kind of unusual. The, and it's no one's fault with the, with the staff. The, when this thing started, the city has a section of land way out east on sixty-four, and they were using it as a, as a range for their, for their police department. And they offered to allow the, the school district to build a facility on their land that the district could run the programs out of for the law enforcement, you know, programs at, at the technical college. And so that's how it began. And the, the site on the school, on the city property was to the very north or the very west of the properties where the, they had traditionally used. And that was, that was the intended place of the new facility. But the adjacent owner objected to it being located there because of noise or, you know, whatever, and wanted it located to the other side of the property. And that's after the, I think, the initial calculations were made of what it was gonna cost.
Okay.
And in addition, the adjacent owner owns the access road from State Road sixty-four that goes more directly to this parcel. There's other access to it, but you go all the way further east on the Maiaque Wachula Road, and it actually adds almost forty-five minutes from downtown to get to the property. You gotta go so far east, and then you gotta double back. And so the city, they didn't like moving the facility to where the adjacent owner wanted it because it uses up an awful lot more of their property. So they thought it lowered the value of their remaining property. And, and this adjacent owner, his other request to not object to the whole thing was that the, was that this access road that he owns from sixty-four get paved. So the paving of that access road got added to the project. And that's the extra eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars, because it's, it's a long access road. It's a couple of miles, I think. So that's, that, so that money came up after you guys had already seen initial figures for what this facility was gonna cost. So I just wanted to make sure you understood how that happened. It's unfortunate. It is a much more direct route to the property. It'll be much faster for everybody, but it goes through someone else's property, and they're granting an easement, allowing it. But they have, their, their terms for granting that easement is that it get paved. And it's also, just so the board knows, it's not a permanent easement. It's for, I think it's for twenty-five years, and then it, and then it disappears.
Okay, that brings up another question then. So we're paving the access road at the request of the adjacent property owner. I can understand that. So their access road is getting paved by the district. So twenty-five years from now, that could be a different property owner. Could that be an issue?
No, the, the easement will be good for that period of time, no matter what happens to the...
But after twenty-five years, you said it...
Then the easement will no longer, you'll no longer be able to use that road to get to the facility. You'll have to, maybe by then, there'll be other roads, if, if there's more development out in that area. I mean, it may get, it may eventually get turned into a public road. But, but the, they were not willing to do a permanent easement.
Okay.
So I just want to make sure the board...
Well, I can understand that, if they sold their property, you know, oh, by the way, I granted easement for this for twenty-five years. You know, you'd think that's a long time, but boy, time goes fast.
Well, it, it, who knows what that area will be like in twenty-five years?
Right, exactly, so. I, I understand the concept why we have to do that.
We never, we never, forgive me if I'm wrong here. It wasn't even this board that approved this. This was approved
Right.
last board, like, a year and a half ago. And we never, we never saw any guaranteed maximum price or anything from anything yet. Okay. This is gonna be part of it. Ms. Foreman?
Okay. Mr. Di, the eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars that cost to, that, is that included in the million and a half that's being referred to?
I would think so.
It's not the increase, it's not an increase?
Mr. Rinaldi can probably sort that.
And then my question also is, the eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars, is that the responsibility of the city share or the district share?
That's all in the district.
All in the district.
The city only offered to allow this to be built on their property.
Okay.
But they're not paying for any of the hard costs.
Mr. Rinaldi, the fifty is not part of the...
The eight hundred and fifty was in this year's five-year capital budget.
So that was...
That was a line item.
Okay, so it's the original budget? Original estimates?
Well, this year's, if you go back two years, it, it was not in the original estimate because we went through the whole relocation of the site. But this past year, in June, when you approved our capital budget, there, there was a line item for eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the access road. Out of the one point five million increase, probably about two hundred to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars will go towards that access road, because that access road is now coming up with a cost right around a million dollars.
Oh, it's the construction that's about a one point three million dollars that we are asked to
Right.
approve the budget amendment for today.
For the construction, yes, yes.
So that's in the...
About two hundred and fifty for the, yeah.
All right, thank you.
Uh, Mr. Tatum?
Good morning, Ms. Sellers. Actually, it is afternoon by ten minutes. Good afternoon. So that I understand how these processes work. My understanding is that when there's a contract, and then there's a, well, when, when, when the, when the amount of money over fifty thousand dollars is involved, then that has to come to the board for, for approval of a contract. Is that true or not? Is that, it's kind of like the threshold? So I'm trying to understand why this large, what, from what I understood from the conversation is that we have an increase from eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars to one point five million dollars for whatever we're doing, roads, whatever improvements we need to make, which, if I do my math, that's about seven hundred thousand dollars. I'm just curious why this doesn't, and I'm not, I'm curious why it doesn't have to come back to the board for approval of a con, it sounds to me like we're making a change to a contract, but go ahead.
Right, so this is the budget amendment, so there's two sides of it. So, so this is the budget side, and then on the finance type side, when, or purchasing side, when there is affirmed up GMP and the cost, and a change order gets put into effect, that will be another line item that's not in this part of budget amendments. That will already be in, in the budget amendment, but then they'll have the change order that you guys would be, or the board would be approving.
So this will, so this will eventually come to us as an item on an agenda for us to vote on, or, or not necessarily?
Yeah, since this is under our construction contract, you've already approved the base construction contract for the architect and for the contractor to do pre-construction services for us. When we get the GMP, we'll come back to you and ask for approval of an amendment to that contract, which will be the GMP amount.
Okay. So why are we, so I, I kind of understand what Ms. Bray is saying now, is that it sounds like we've kind of made this, the staff has made this decision, and the money has been moved around, and, and then, then the paperwork will be done, and it will come to us for an approval, instead of, and there might be a reason, there's probably a good reason why, instead of us approving it, then the staff go does it. It's kind of like putting the cart, it seems to me it's the cart before the horse, but help me understand why that's a bad analogy.
Well, I mean, because we're, because we do have an estimate at this point from not, for ninety percent construction documents that are within the range of when we add the one point five million of that, of that specific budget. So we, we, I, so we, we move forward with the design. We've done, we've almost probably three or four months' worth of value engineering, trying to get this project in budget. So at this point right now, we're feeling we're getting close, and we're gonna be delivering it to you for final approval, hopefully December or January, so we can start construction. So we'll come before you one more time.
Yeah, so this is kind of like fair warning to us, like, this is coming, and we... So it was good discussion to have, so, so, and this is the way that the process would usually work, even other con, like, school building contracts or something, if we, if, I'm trying to understand, like, what this process is in the sense of, let's say there was just a general school bidding contract, and we, we, we're building, I don't know, an addition onto a school, and it's X amount of dollars, and then, where there's a budget amendment, and all of a sudden, we've moved three, three million dollars, and you come to us and you say, well, we had to move three million dollars because the price of drywall went up, or whatever that is, and, and then, again, it just seems like it's backwards. It seems like we should approve that money to be spent, and then you would go do it, but maybe that's not how the world works, and I don't know.
Well, I mean, from, from the, the, the construction side, we, we would be looking for approval of the budget, because if you did not
Right.
then we would go back and say, you're gonna take that second floor off. You're gonna reduce by, I mean, that, the board doesn't have an appetite, appetite to, to approve your budget increase. So it, it, it's a quicker way to get us to where, where we need to be, I guess, is the way to put it.
That's how it works.
And we're not, so let me ask you this. It's not like we're spending the money. We're just saying, there's been a quote-unquote budget increase. So it's not like we've sent out a check to anybody. So this is just them saying, hey, we thought it was gonna be this, we're gonna have to increase it by this. If we go on next month, and they come back and they say, hey, the GMP is now eight million, we're like, whoa, whoa, we're not doing that. This budget amendment truly never happens, the money hasn't moved yet. So we're, we're approving, so you're proving to spend it theoretically in the future if everything comes back right.
Correct.
Just like we would normally, in your, in your scenario, we'd do the same thing. We would say, hey, we, we're, like, we did, we're gonna spend a hundred and some odd million on all these buildings, and then when they come back and say, wait a minute, GMP is now, or, you know, guaranteed price is X, Y, Z, we may come back and say, whoa, 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 scratch that. You know, we don't want that second floor, or whatever.
And, and I, I feel that the, the way we do it in, in this two-step, I would hate to come forward with a GMP that was one point five million and then expect you to approve that, having not identified, so that's just the way we're doing it.
I almost see, like, in, like, your personal budget is like, you know, I know that I'm gonna have to get a new car, so I'm gonna put some money away now, but then when I get to the new car, it may not be as much, it may be, you know what I mean? So it's just preparing future. We haven't really spent it yet.
Right. So really, what's happening is administrative, finance changes are happening in preparation for the agenda item that's gonna come before us, so that you have quote-unquote all your ducks in a row, so that when it gets to us, you can assure us that we have the money, that it's been, that, that the budget, the money is in the right place in the budget, so that it's all gonna work out, and that we don't go broke, for lack of a better term. Okay, I'm, I'm understanding, and it's, it does seem a little backwards, though, that, you know, usually, go, go spend money, then you go spend it. What it sounds like we're doing right now is, we're, we've already kind of, we have a plan to go spend the money. We're gonna tell you, we're gonna bring it to you later. But I understand that you have to do your staff work in advance before it comes to us. And, and this budget, this budget amendment is part of that staff work to put the plan together, to get the agenda item ready, so that you can bring it to us.
Just like when we started the year, and we sorted out with a budget, and we presented that to the board at the same time. This is just a tweaking, as we had mentioned before, would occur throughout the year. So we knew of these anticip, possibly anticipated costs, so I guess, I guess you could always have seen it all happen all the same month, but we knew this was already a possibility.
It's all good. I'm, I'm just, I'm educating myself and understanding this better, and trying to understand what's going on behind the scenes. And I'm getting it, I'm kind of talking through this out loud with you, is that you're doing your administrative preparation work so that the agenda item is ready to go when it gets to us, and you're advising us of that in advance, to some degree. Got it, all right, thank you.
Ms. Bray?
I just wanted to get a copy of the original project for this. The original project for that, because I know that there was a ribbon, not a ribbon, honey, but groundbreaking, wasn't it? Yeah, I didn't, I remember Ms. Messengers talking about how she had to go through the weeds and the sandals and stuff.
Yeah, it was, I can't...
I was at another event, so I didn't go out there. But yeah, so that project is already out there. Am I correct?
When you say out there, when, when, when you say out there, this board...
Not this board approved that project, some, the board, right, already approved the project for five...
You approved the five-year capital budget, that had the project, project in there. The drawings are complete now. The contractor has put the drawings out to bid. They've come to us with their GMP that I'll be bringing to you in either December or January, depending on the, the timing. And that, then we will be under contract for the project with the contractor.
Okay, so now I'm understanding. We approved this project in the capital?
Yes, yes.
Okay. In the capital, we're seeing, oh my gosh, the road's gonna cost a whole lot more, so we have to do a budget amendment to cover that cost.
Yes.
Right, but it's all still coming from the capital?
Yes.
From the capital budget. Okay, 'cause it just looks kind of odd to me, and I'm sure to others, okay, we're kind of doing this backwards, but we're actually looking out for the project that's coming, gonna come before us, and we wanna make sure that we have the funds to cover that when it does come, come to us. I just think it's an awful lot for a budget amendment, but, you know, it is what it is. So I look forward to seeing the project.
Dr. Weisong had a comment.
Yeah.
Let me, Vice Chair, and Mr. Tatum, let me come in at a little different way in terms of, you know, what I'm seeing as the, the, the new person in the, in the organization watching these processes unfold. The deputy superintendents and I are meeting weekly, and they're bringing the things that are kind of bubbling up. And then we're meeting monthly at a different time to go through the general fund, the capital fund, and then other special funds. And really, what's happening is that as changes are needing to be made, or new needs are being identified, we're, we're talking about, okay, here's an add. Where's the other hat, right? So where's the subtraction going to be? In the case of the capital plan, that may be that, okay, we need one point five million more here. So in our multi-year plan, where is that one point five million going to come from? And then when we have that agreement as a leadership team, execute the budget amendment, so that we don't, then the following meeting, come back and say, oh, now, here's another five hundred thousand that's needed, and we inadvertently take it from the same place. That's how you end up making a really long-term budget mistake. So by immediately recording those items as we see needs arising, and then bringing them to the, I mean, if you don't approve the budget amendments, we'll go back and undo those, right? Because every change is recorded. But the purpose of doing it immediately is that Ms. Sellers' team is always making sure that we know exactly where we're projecting our end balances to be based on the changes we're making. And so we're looking at those every month. How has our projected end of the year changed in the last thirty days, based on the needs that have arisen? And so on the, on the, on the operating side, it's really an annual piece. On the capital side, it's looking over the next five to ten years. If this project costs more, what are we not gonna do in order to make that work? So I think all of that, as those decisions are being made, the budget amendments are memorializing all of that so that we don't inadvertently commit the same dollars to multiple projects, so that we're not all of a sudden using up the uncommitted fund balance on, on different needs, right? So that we're saying no when we need to, and not overcommitting. And then those amendments are coming to you for approval. And again, if, if there's an amendment the board doesn't like, we can undo that. In the, you know, in, in the finance system with your no vote, that doesn't change the reality, then, that we've got a project that we can't move forward on. So that's, I think that's the, the, at least, that's how I see the process from my seat.
Ms. Messenger?
Well explained, thank you. I just wanted to make it really clear that we, we don't have a guaranteed price yet. That's, that, that we don't have an agreement yet with that. So this number going up, that would happen in a lot of projects. We've, we said, it's like, it's like if Mr. Tatum wanted to go see Taylor Swift, right? He was really dying to see Taylor Swift. And he set aside two hundred dollars to buy that ticket. He really wants to go, that's his budget. His budget is two hundred dollars. I really wanna go see Taylor Swift, he says. And, yeah, he does. Yeah, I know, I could feel it in him. And I could tell, right? But unfortunately, he goes online and Ticketmaster, or whatever website they're using now, says, sorry, it's three hundred. So he has a choice. I can either buy a nosebleed ticket and fit my two hundred dollar budget, or I'm gonna have to up my budget. That's all this is. We're either deciding, we're gonna do the nosebleed seats and stick with the original budget, or we're gonna say, no, I want that deluxe seat, I wanna get so close to Taylor Swift, I could see the color of her eyes, and I'm gonna pay the extra money to, to do that. And, and, and when we agree to that sale, then you get that guaranteed maximum price. We haven't, we haven't done that part yet. What's come before the board is a MOU between the city of Bradenton, and it sounds like what you did was use the continuing contracts that we, the board has with the architects and the, and contractors to, to do this. So that part hasn't come before us, but what will come before us is a guaranteed maximum price, and this is just putting that money aside so that we can get it.
Yeah, good. I was gonna use a car repair analogy, but your Swifty, uh, Mr. Tatum was way better.
I know. It's because I know, I know him very well, and I know...
But I agree with him, I'd rather go to see Travis Kelsey, but we'll go, you were let up to speak. Before the, before the Swifty deal was talked about.
I don't think I've been humorous. Anecdote, but I think I'll pass and just stick to, stick to the facts, man, but that was good, I know, it was great. So I'm up again, right?
Yes, sir, yes, sir, yes, sir.
So I do, so now I'm understanding the, the process a little better. So this project was approved by a previous, previous board. And the way I've seen these projects happen is we, first, we go out for like an architect approval. Again, Mr. Rinaldi, you may have, you're getting some exercise, so at our age, burning calories is a good thing, so. So what happens is we, we usually, okay, we approve the project, and there's some plans, and the architect, architects are hired, and then that's, that's like the first phase. And, but we don't really know, like Mrs. Messenger's saying, we don't really know how much the project is, is gonna cost. So then, when, while all that's going on in the budget for this year, you're off, you're, the people that work with you, your staff said, well, we think it's gonna cost eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And so that's what you put in the line item of the budget. And then your staff has been doing some more work during the year, and they said, gee, actually, as it turns out, we're gonna have to pay, in Ms. Messenger's analogy, a little bit more... we're going to have to pay, in Ms. Messenger's analogy, a little bit more for the seats right up front. So what you're saying is you approve this project. We never have gotten to the point where, you know, we have a guaranteed maximum price on a contract with a builder. We're in some intermediate stage between you approve the project and architectural design is going on. But we don't have a GMP from a builder yet. We're in that planning phase. And basically now the planning phase has said, well, we budgeted 850, but it's going to cost us more. So now we've got to move some money to make this work.
And that's relatively accurate. The only thing is that we also pay that contractor pre-construction services. And during the three phases of the project, 30% complete, 60, 95% complete, they provide, part of their scope is to provide estimates so that we have a check all the way along to make sure that we're, our scope is in line with what the budget that was established in the five-year plan. With this one, we, I mean, we've just seen increase after increase and then adjustments of the site, as Mr. Die said. So at this point, we feel comfortable that we're going to, if we adjust the budget by 1.5 million, we're going to be able to get the project within budget. So, but, so there are steps along the way where we check our scope relative to budget, do it at 60%, 90%. So at this point, right now, they put it out to bid, so we have actual hard bids from their subcontractors. And that's what we're working on with them right now.
Okay, great. Thank you. That's all I have. Thank you.
I have just one more thing.
Yeah, I see you.
I just wanted to add that it keeps being stated, well, a pass board approved this, but this budget, where this money is, everybody sitting here voted for it.
Yeah.
So-
But I think he's right about the start of the project was a different board.
Right. The school board is the school board is the school board.
I don't disagree with you. I understand. But I do see-
It's the school board.
No, I agree with you, but I do see where coming in new and all of a sudden all these things are thrown at you. Why? Because I have been new. Well, we've all been new. But I do see where projects all of a sudden, so.
I just want to make it clear, like, this board and the people sitting here did vote for this money to go towards this project. That was all I wanted to say.
Yep, back in July.
And I think-
Or September, excuse me, official. I don't want to get Mr. Oh, well.
Was it September?
So I don't see any other board members let up to speak. Thank you, Ms. Sellers. Well, you can probably hold on one second. Because I think you got the quarterly Esser report. Next. But let's go ahead and vote on the, we had a motion and a second on the approval of the budget amendments for September 2023. And it passes four to one with Ms. Foreman the only no vote, Mr. Choate, Ms. Bray, and Mr. Tatum the yes votes. Ms. Messenger, did I say Ms. Messenger? Item number two, Superintendent Weisong.
Thank you, Chairman. I recommend approval of the quarterly Esser report for the period ending September 30th, 2023.
So moved.
I'll second.
You have a motion and a second. And Ms. Sellers, you're up again.
All right. So this is the quarterly report through September 30. Actually, there are some additional adjustments getting made that are allowable during this closing of October. So we will be able to see a few more items in the column that's showing remaining balance after charter and indirect costs. Some of those items that, for the contracts and the Esser II that expired on September 30, 2023, where you see an outstanding amount of still like 101,000 in the supplement program and the 39,000 still remaining in the CTE. Those are items that are actually, one of those has already been submitted to DOE and the other one is actually going today to be able to capture the rest of those costs. So by the time you see this next quarterly report, those will be spent down as well.
Thank you.
Ms. Foreman?
I know you all want to hear from me again. The, one of the reasons for this report was to keep us advised as to what recurring expenses we have that are being paid by Esser. And that's what the bottom part of it is, is where it says, sum of current budget is 31 million. Back when Esser II was around, that was about 40 million. So I just want to clarify that $9 million difference are those recurring expenses that have either gone away or moved back into the general fund?
They have gone back into the general fund. There were, obviously, Esser I grants has actually not shown on here anymore. So in Esser I, there were counselors and middle school and high school counselors. Those have been moved back and captured in the general fund. Like currently, right now, there's 207 positions actually being funded by the Esser grants. 197 of those are expected to return back to the general fund. So at any rate, so that's the whole picture of where we are right now and where we'll end up having to go back to. Yes. So the expense, what you see on here is not all of the award money that we had gotten since it's only showing the grants that are expiring or inactive right now.
So I just want everybody, including the public, to understand that we've got 31, 32 million dollars in expenses that the revenue associated with that is going to go away. And that's a lot to absorb in our budget, so. That's all.
No, I think, I forget when we asked that. I mean, it was a year or so ago. We talked about, I believe you helped just create that bottom portion to show. Yeah, fantastic. Mr. Tatum?
Ms. Sellers, so on, you have the report in front of you, right? You're looking at it. The second to the last, not the ending date, not percent spent after remaining, remaining balance after charter and indirect costs. So the number in bold, for instance, line item 44301 total, that is what the balance of the Esser II funds will be after we've, after we've paid all that remaining balance after charter and indirect costs. Does that mean that that money's left over still to, sure. Tell you what, maybe I'll come and have a meeting with you because I don't like, sometimes we go back and forth in these meetings like this. I think I'll just, I think I'll just set up a meeting. So I, because I have a couple of questions about this and it probably, it's kind of technical, and I think I'll just set up a meeting to get a better understanding.
And the third to the end column, not the ending dates, is the costs that are related to indirect and the charter schools. So we make sure that, and those spend downs, while they're built in, they're not the district's funds. Just to point that out, too.
That's good. Thanks, Misses. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Bray?
I just had, you said, okay, on onset of all the Esser dollars, the end, I'm a little worried that you said, how many positions are being paid solely out of Essers that's going to be absorbed?
The 197.
197 positions. Okay. I know when this all came about that there were some positions that were created to help with the management of this fund and/or people out in the field at the schools. So is there a plan to reduce staffing because of the Esser funds are going away?
Well, partially, because some of those, some of those positions, well, the 197 actually were intended to go back to over, into the general fund. So the general fund that you have seen increase over time, if those particular positions all do go back, you won't see as high as a general fund balance as you did before just because those positions are expected to go back. There will be some decisions made as far as how many of those the district may still want to maintain or the allocations at the schools, you know, that kind of a thing. But those are all plans and projections and discussions that will occur as they get ready to not see those funds anymore and put those positions back into the general fund without the Esser.
Okay, well, that's a little-
That'll be reflected in 2024, '25.
Okay, because that makes me feel better. You said that the general fund will increase anyway because of the money coming in, is what you basically said.
No, no. So the general fund, you have seen the fund balance increase over time because, because we did get these extra funds spending out of the extra Esser that we did get. So that was how we had talked about, how we could see the increase going up. But we knew that we were eventually going to have to change paths. And while we had a higher fund balance now, which led to some concerns for a higher reserve amount, we are expecting to see that go down because the extra revenue coming from the, from the Esser, Esser is not going to be there. But we have a fund balance currently to be able to handle that. But more conversations we'll have to incur as far as how to maintain that many positions with whichever revenue we end up with. And that's related to, you know, the FEFP funding and other sources that we do have.
Okay, so, okay, so I get it in my mind. It's just hard to get out sometimes. Okay. That's all I have. Thank you.
Okay.
All right, I see no one else lit up to speak. Let's go ahead and vote on the quarterly Esser report for period ending September 30th, 2023. And that passes five to zero. Item number three, Superintendent Weisong.
I recommend approval to adopt new and amend existing school board policies as follows. And here is the reading of the numbers, board members.
Oh, boy, they're right.
1111, 1120, 1121.01, 1242, 2120, 2210, 2271, 2417, 2421, 2423, 2460, 3111, 3120, 3121.01, 3220, 3242, 4111, 4120, 4121.01, 5111.01, 5780, 6114, 6320, 6322, 6325, 6440, 65, 6440, 6450, 6550, 7544, 8405, 8610, 9160, 9215, 9700.01, 9800, and bylaw 0144.
That wasn't put up on the graphic.
Wow.
I think he missed one.
Uh-oh.
I wasn't going to say it. I wasn't going to say it. That was good. Thank you very much for that recommendation.
So moved.
You have a motion?
I'll second.
And a second. I know we've discussed this, obviously, in board workshop. We had a public hearing. Obviously, no public comment. Any question? I don't see anybody lit up from the board. And I know Mr. Chapman's here.
A second.
Okay. I don't see any questions lit up, so we can go ahead and vote on the approval to adopt the new policy and amendments to the school board policy.
What were those policy numbers again?
And that passes five to zero. Item number four, before you had to respond.
This one's much easier. I recommend approval to adopt new policy and amend existing school board policy, bylaw 0163.
I'll second.
So a motion and a second. I don't see, nope, never mind. Mr. Tatum?
I just have one question, Dr. Weisong. Now that I'm thinking about policy, we don't need to discuss it. But when, what's the timeframe for reviewing the student code of conduct? I'm just curious. When does that come up?
I believe those, well, we've been making notes all this year, but I believe the formal discussions start in January. And then the goal will be, and we'll kind of back into the timeline based on the, once the board approves the meeting calendar for this next year. But obviously, the goal will be to bring final adoption to the July meeting so that the new code of conduct is in full effect for the first day of school.
Okay, but it starts getting discussed like a workshop we have in January somewhere.
Well, we'll start with the, we'll start with the committee work in January. And then if there are specific topics that board members want to talk about and give us guidance on before you see a first draft of changes, we can certainly schedule that as a workshop.
Okay, great. Thank you. That's all I have. Thank you.
Ms. Messenger?
Yeah, I just want to state for the record my disagreement with the change of this policy. I believe that this change moves the district backwards. It is not a modern business practice to not allow the chairman to run the meeting as they seem fit. And that means even virtually, so.
Thank you. I see no one else lit up to speak, so let's go ahead and vote on the approval to adopt new policy. I don't, I forget what number, and amend the school board policies. And that approved four to one with your yes votes being Mr. Choate, Ms. Bray, Ms. Foreman, Mr. Tatum, no vote being Ms. Messenger. Move on to item number five, Superintendent Weisong.
Thank you, Chairman. I recommend approval of the Altria Jewel-related settlement agreement dated August 19th, 2023.
So moved.
I'll second.
You have a motion and a second. And before we have any questions, I'd probably say, you want Mr. Die? Maybe explain a little bit? Or Dr. Weisong, do you want to do it?
Very nice.
Mr. Die.
Okay. Mr. Die, you just want to explain, just recap what we're accepting.
Yes, happy to. So I believe the previous board approved the original Jewel settlement and the engagement of the law firm group and the vaping litigation that's based out of Northern California. So for a little background, I spotted this issue and was interested in it and thought the board may have interest in it originally. And I think it was really not on the radar at the time and brought it to the board to see if there was interest in participating in that litigation. The board, I don't think we even had a, much of a presentation. The board at that time, I think, felt very unified that the vaping epidemic was affecting the district in a negative way and causing use of resources and personnel, et cetera. And entered into the litigation as a plaintiff, entered engagement with the Wagstaff firm and other attorneys that were bringing about that litigation. A settlement was reached with the Jewel group of defendants. And that's, came back to the board in a separate settlement agreement that the board approved previously. The first installment of actual money from that agreement is supposed to hit the district next month. So that's good. And it's going to be, been told around $150,000. And that's just a partial payment on the Jewel group of defendants. Altria is another vaping subsidiary of the same Jewel companies, but because it's separate legal entities, it was not part of the original settlement agreement with Jewel. So a separate settlement was reached with Altria. It's very, almost identical issues. It's not as much money. It's a smaller size settlement. And that's what you're being asked to approve today. But it's almost identical. Same law firms involved. The amount is, I've been told, I know some board members were wondering, it's, I've been told it's going to end up being around 80, $90,000, something like that. I don't know when that that would actually come to the district because it's trailing behind Jewel. And Jewel will actually have additional monies coming after that. So that's what you're being asked to approve today is the Altria group settlement of, and it's vaping, just like the Jewel, and it's related to the Jewel settlement.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Ms. Foreman?
Yes, I would like to propose an amendment to this, to this matter where it says approval of the related settlement agreement dated August 19, 2023. And we instruct the superintendent to direct the proceeds to mitigation of specific damages from vaping. I don't want to see this just come into the general fund and, hey, hey, we won. to see this just come into the general fund and, hey, hey, we won. I want to see it go to mitigate the actual damages from Jewel.
So where, just verbiage, where are you wanting to?
I'm just adding it on to the end of it, you know, where approval of the Altria Jewel-related settlement agreement dated August 19, 2023, parentheses, incoming funds, in parentheses, and the board direct the superintendent to, to direct the proceeds to mitigation of specific damages from vaping. My wording is, you know, obviously, I need a better word.
I understand what you're, I mean, I understand what you're saying.
Yeah.
Can I add on to that?
Well.
I think you have to vote online.
You got to vote on the first, and then you make it.
Well.
Right, nobody's seconding it yet. And we're still in discussion.
Right.
We're still in discussion.
There's no discussion because no one has seconded it yet. So we're going to approve or disapprove her amendment. And so are you okay with your wording now? I mean, you're...
Yeah.
I just wanted to clean it up a little bit. I wasn't going to add. I was just going to say that I think.
We can't discuss it until.
Okay.
Yeah, let's, someone needs to second it, and then we'll discuss.
Who needs to second anything?
Well, I'm saying in order to discuss.
I'll second it just for the point of just.
Discussion. I like it. Okay. Now, Ms. Bray, you were lit up to speak on this.
I think what needs to be done is, this money needs to be directed towards students to make them aware of the dangers of vaping. I don't know if there needs to be a training little video of the damages or something like that, but that's what I think the direction Ms. Foreman is leaning toward is educate the kids. I mean, it's going to have to go somewhere. How do you, where do you put that?
Okay, well, we already provide instruction on that. So you'd be taking this money and applying it to that instruction, and we get nowhere. What I'm anticipating or envisioning is that there are, there's equipment or there's electronics you can put in the restrooms that will detect vaping.
Okay, okay.
And that would be a true, that's something that we don't have. We have it in a few, from what I understand, but.
Like an deterrent to stop the vaping.
Right, right, so.
Okay, I get that. Yeah, I understand that totally now.
Mr. Tatum?
We're just talking about the amendment right now. I have some more questions for the major, for the major motion. Dr. Weisong, what are your, what are your thoughts? I mean, Mrs. Foreman's idea doesn't seem like a bad idea, but I'm just curious. There's like I always say, I have this great idea in my head, and then there's operationalizing it. So what are your thoughts about this?
The team and I are comfortable. If the board wants to direct that these funds be used a specific way, we're certainly happy to implement. We can do that both on the technology side, and, you know, there may be an opportunity to do some more work on the curriculum side. I think that's where we would go back and talk with some of our, not only our curriculum team, but some of our nonprofit community partners. They may be aware of a program or an opportunity that might have a cost attached to it, but certainly adding, adding more vape detectors is something we can certainly do.
Do you understand that technology to some degree? I'm just curious, is, how does it, obviously not a smoke alarm because that would set off the whole building, so there's some, do you understand how it works?
Yeah, well, there are different, there are different vendors and products out there, and so I would have to defer to Mr. D'Amico in terms of the implementation strategy.
Okay, great. Thank you.
So.
Ms. Messenger?
Restate your motion.
Approval of the Altria Jewel-related settlement agreement dated August 19, 2023, incoming funds, and instruct, or direct the superintendent to direct proceeds to mitigation of specific damages from vaping. I perhaps should restate that.
Direct superintendent to use proceeds. But I think you're right. I mean.
I don't think your motion does what you say you want it to do, and I like your idea, although I think that's a how and not a what, so that's not our job, but I think it's an interesting idea. But I don't think your motion does that because it's mitigating damages. But really, it's more of a, what you're talking about is a preventive measure.
Okay.
I like your idea, although it's not our idea to make, right? But, and he sounds like he has several different ideas of avenues, and it's not, I'm not, I just don't think, I'm not an attorney. It's.
Okay, may I restate my motion?
Yes.
Okay.
You've got one in your head for it.
And instruct the superintendent, or direct, direct the superintendent to direct proceeds to... I have to withdraw it? Thank you. Okay. I withdraw my motion.
I didn't know if you were amending. We'd have to do a whole note in a second. So if you want to.
I want to withdraw that one.
Does the second agree?
Does the second agree?
Yes.
Okay.
I seconded it.
And direct the proceeds to preventative measures. Direct the proceeds to new preventative measures for vaping. May I?
Say that one more time.
Okay. If you guys want, you know, if the lawyers want to jump in here and, you know, make it, make it better, I'm all for it. You understand what I'm trying to get at.
I'll go to try. How about direct the superintendent to utilize the funds for educational instruction on the harm of vaping and for other preventative measures?
Thank you.
Did I, I do, I, did you write that down?
I'm hoping.
Ms. Cox, I know Ms. Cox was trying to.
Oh, she didn't. Okay.
No, that's okay. So, Mr. Die, will you repeat that one more time?
To direct the superintendent to expend the funds towards educational purposes discouraging student use of vaping products and to take other preventative measures.
I'll second that one.
So we have a second.
Yeah.
Any other discussion on the amendment?
Only to be used. That's kind of what you're saying, right? Yeah, okay. I just want to make sure that we're, I don't want that money to come in and we use it for something else. And I like your idea of putting, I don't know about how that works, if there's an alarm that goes off and it's alerted to staff. I don't know anything about that, but.
They can expect, you know, and that's a management thing.
And they can see who comes out of the bathroom.
So, Ms., okay, so, let's, Ms. Cox, you had that ready, or do you want us to just vote manually on the amendment?
Vote manually.
We can, yes. All right, let's go ahead and vote manually on the amendment that was presented by Ms. Foreman. All those in favor, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. Carrie's five, nothing. So now we have the item amended, and Mr. Tatum, you had questions on the overall item?
Yes, so, Mr. Die, some, a couple constituents have some concerns about how the, how you and your firm receive compensation from this. So could you explain that to us about how you receive compensation, your firm receives compensation, the lawyer group out in California, there has to be legal representation, and just go through that so we all have a better understanding of that, please?
Yes, I'm happy to. And I went through this when Jewel first came before the board, but I didn't reiterate it when the Altria settlement came, so I'm happy to do that again. So these cases are done on contingency fee basis, so you don't pay attorney's fees as these cases go along, but the attorneys get paid a piece of the settlement. They get a percentage of the settlement if, if you're successful, if they're successful. The fact that this is all being conducted in Northern California, these firms are not Florida firms, and so to have a Florida legal connection with our district or any district that's outside of where they practice, they engage the outside counsel for school districts or other governmental entities and make you a part of the lawyer team, and they pay you a small amount of the contingency fee from their money so that you are actually engaged as well as the Florida local counsel in the case. So it, so that it's legal because they're not Florida attorneys. It does not come out, that, the contingency fee does not come out of the money that the school board gets. It's coming from the money that the lawyers get. So the, so our firm is not double-dipping the school district by charging our normal hourly rate and then also charging the district a piece of the award that the district would receive. It's actually, it's actually, we're actually being paid by the other lawyers, so they're reducing their amount. And it's only the amount that they make in the district. It's not the overall, it's not the overall total litigation. Does that make sense?
Yes, that's the only question that I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Were you lit up?
Yeah, I was. How many, how many states were involved with this? Do you know?
It's, well, it's, it's multi-state litigation. I don't know the exact answer to that. So, but it's all over the country. And, and I think I've provided you all with some statistics of the number of other districts that have entered into the litigation as well, as well as the social media case, so.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay, I just off the top of my head, but.
It's, you know, it's a nationwide problem.
Right.
So they, so it takes very specialized firms to even do this type of litigation because of that.
Okay.
All right, thank you. I see no other board members lit up to speak. So let's go ahead and vote on the approval of the Altria Jewel-related settlement agreement dated August 19th, 2023, and direct superintendent to utilize the funds towards educational purposes for deterring students from vaping. And that is approved five to zero. Thank you, Superintendent, for those recommendations. Moving on to item number 17, new business without superintendent recommendation. Item number one, approval of the board's legal firm evaluation for the period of 2324. I know we all received that through our packets, and so we will need a motion and a second for the approval of the board's legal firm evaluation for 2324.
I move. We approve the board's legal firm evaluation for the period of 2324, indicating a score of highly effective.
Second.
Motion is second, and we have Ms. Foreman lit up to speak.
Yes, I just want to mention to the board, the purpose of an evaluation is to communicate directly with, with the, with the law firm, saying, you know, this is what we think is great, this is what we think is not. And I know in my evaluation, I did make reference to all of the, the, this was quite a year, you know, for, that the law firm had to deal with, you know, and I commend you all because I know that you saved the district a lot of money along the way. So, and I did point that out in my evaluation. I do want to stress to fellow board members, this is my criticism, is that if we are evaluating someone and simply writing down a score without giving input as to how we arrived at our score, you know, what, what we think should happen, I think we are doing not only whoever the person we are evaluating a disservice, but also the district. And so I would encourage you to always take these evaluations very, very seriously. So, thank you.
I know other board members.
I was just gonna.
Ms. Bray?
I was going to say, a first-year school board member, I leaned on Mr. Die's guidance on a lot of matters, long discussions over issues that we've had. And I just want to say, your candor and your honesty, honest opinion, whether I agree or not, was welcomed. It gave me a perspective, maybe, on some things that I wasn't real sure about, because that's the last thing I know about, is being an attorney. Although, becoming a board member, you learn a lot about statutes and how they, they're applicable to anything, really. And that's why I gave you the scores I did, because I felt that you were that little, pushed me along to help me learn what actually goes on up here. And I just want to say I really appreciate it. I think it's great. Your score may be different next year, but you went through a lot of struggles with us this year. And I just want to say thank you so much for it.
You're welcome. Mr. Tatum?
So I too, I mean, you do a good job of personal relationships, and you're always available to us, so I appreciate that. Since we're talking about it, and we have to talk about these things in the sunshine, and goal number three, it says, informs the board of pertinent changes in state and federal law, advises board on impact of pending legislation. And I'm, I'm just trying to understand, it seems like Mr. Chapman does that mostly as opposed to our attorney, and I just would like to have a discussion about that. Is that, am I misunderstanding? Am I perceiving that wrong? Is, is that not how it's working out? Or, that's my perception. You can see my score over here of three. That was one of the areas where I thought maybe there could be some improvement, and so I did give some comments, as Ms. Foreman said, but maybe I don't, maybe I don't understand what, what Mr. Chapman's role is versus Mr. Die's role, and I'd like to know, understand a little better, because it does seem like informs the board of pertinent changes in state and federal law, advises board on impact of pending legislation. It does seem that Mr. Chapman primarily performs that role for us, but I don't know.
I can probably respond.
Sure.
Yeah. That's a good question. The, so, at, at the last conference that Pamela and I attended for the school board attorneys, which are very, very well done, we actually had a segment from a former school board attorney from Antioch County, John Bowman, who was here when the financial crisis happened. That's probably why he's not, was no longer here after that. But great guy, and he's been a school board attorney for his, I think, most of his career. And one of the things he did, he was doing kind of a overview of that practice, over the, you know, how it's changed over time, and he started with a book that another school board attorney put together, which was called the, you know, The Book of School Law. And it was literally half the size of this. It was a little teeny book, like a little Bible, like those little Bibles that.
He has it.
Oh, no, I don't. But it was this small.
Yeah.
It was that tiny of a book.
And so, the, if you, it's funny, when you look at these evaluation samples, forms, and we've tried to improve the, those forms over time for the superintendent and others, they almost kind of relate back to that early era, where probably the school board attorney was the only one that updated the board on a change in a law that affected the school district because it was easy to stay on top of that. It was so small. And then today, John showed, you know, which Pamela has up in her library.
Oh, it's outdated.
A treatise of the current school laws, and it's, it's this big. It's a whole library. So you really have to have your professional staff who are, who are technicians at the statutes that affect their departments that come out every year, and they've got to get on them immediately. and they've got to get on them immediately. And become the, really the technical experts of those statutes. And it would, it would be almost impossible just to ask just your, your general, your, your general counsel or your school board attorney to be in charge of that. It's just because of the, how big it's become over time. So does that make sense? So, so it's kind of been divided up in a, per, per the statutes that affect each department in each area that the school district, which is a vast, you know, challenge to do. And then it kind of comes to us when there's a question or a specific instance comes up and they want the attorney to help interpret and get through the situation with the best we can do and try to, try to help the board or the staff navigate the law. Does that answer the question?
Yes, so do we come? I guess what, what I'm getting to is if, if this evaluation form does not effectively represent what it is that we're asking you to do, then maybe it's time to modify it a little bit. And you could, at least you and I could work on something. If you don't, I mean, if you feel this is good, great. If not, then that's fine too, but maybe this needs to be updated, so to speak. Do you think there, there could be some updates here to better reflect what your current role is?
Yes, and I think it's organic and should be updated over time. And it actually was pretty major updated, Ms. Foreman would remember, probably two years ago. When it was more designed for having like a single in-house attorney. And the board, just, this is kind of interesting is, you know, the, the, when the, when the district went through the financial crisis that was previously mentioned, one of the things that was done to address that, as well as all these committees got formed and all the auditing began, try to avoid that crisis again. But one of the things that was done that I think was excellent is the school district went to this bifurcated legal department where you have outside counsel for the board, inside counsel for the staff, and the Myrad of, of regulatory things that the, that the staff have to deal with. And HR and all that. So that came out, and, and our firm getting hired came out of that era, was a crisis, when the board decided, well, let's have an outside counsel be the, be the school board attorney. And they're not part of the staff, they're not an employee of the district. So they have no prejudices from that. And we won't be here forever, but I just think that, that's a great setup. And I would encourage, you know, the school district to keep that in place. And definitely, I think it's a, it's a superior setup.
And then, and then maybe a workshop to revise this and bring it more in line with what you see is your current role and your, or what we see is your, to, to better match what we expect out of you. Because when I read that and it says informs the board of pertinent changes in state and federal law, advises board on impact of pending legislation, if that's not really your role anymore, then we should just probably clean this up a little bit and then maybe your score will go up a little bit too. That'd be good.
It could be improved.
Okay, great.
I'd like Pam in charge of that.
No.
I don't know how that would work with it. I mean, you would, you would maybe make your, make your edits and you could work with the superintendent's staff or even with the general counsel some, we could do during a workshop, it's just an idea. I just would like to make sure that what's reflected on the evaluation form is actually what we're asking you to do. Because that causes some confusion, so, or can cause some confusion. Yes, I'm done, thank you.
Um, yeah, I would like to use this as an opportunity to talk about a concern that I've had ever since I've been on this board. And that has been that board members don't always know what litigation is going on. Now, Mr. Dye keeps us informed on litigation that Aaron Jackson is involved in when there are changes on that. But when there's the slip and falls, that's being handled by an outside law firm. And we're not appro, we're, we're not made aware of it. And that's part of what Mr. Cho, with the next item on the agenda is about. But I, it disturbs me when I, I go on the clerk's website and pull up, you know, school district of Manatee County, and there's been two, three suits filed just this fall against us. And they're not suing the district, they're suing the board. And I take that personally. So we need a system to be made aware. And I'm, unfortunately, Ms. DiAgostino, I'm looking at you. But.
Foreshadowing.
Well, I don't know if it's, I don't know if it's her responsibility, I mean, she's got.
I think Dr. Weiss, but, but yes.
But Mr. Dye represents the board members, he represents the board. And so he's our attorney and we're getting sued and he knows about it, he should know about it. He needs to let us know. Somebody does.
Dr. Weiss, honey, do you have a thought?
Uh, Ms. DiAgostino and I recently discussed putting a new kind of procedure in place to ensure that each time there's service to the, to the district or the board, that each board member is notified. So that's coming.
Wonderful, thank you.
Perfect.
How long, when's that gonna start up?
I mean, we're, I, I, I think we're, I think we're ready to go, we've talked with Mr. Dye as well.
Already started. I, I sent Mr. Dye an email recently letting him know about the two cases that have been filed against the board since I started here. I assume he's shared those with you?
Nope.
No.
Not yet.
And then your predecessor, I believe he kept a list, you know, which, you know, a spreadsheet would be great, you know, where everything is listed and doesn't come off the spreadsheet until it's finalized, till it's settled.
I can certainly work on that.
Thank you.
Mr. Tatum?
Mr. Dye, would you explain the term sovereign immunity and how that affects lawsuits against, whenever you're done writing there? Thank you.
That's, that's statutory immunity that governmental entities have that caps the damages that can be levied against them in litigation.
You know what that current limit is? I thought it was up for, I remember Representative Robinson, that came up on our last visit to him.
Yeah, I believe it's 200,000.
I think it's still 200,000.
200,000.
Okay. They were talking about raising it to a million or something like that, so.
It, it can be contracted away, so the governmental entity can actually waive it. But usually does not.
Okay.
And it's, it's to address that governmental bodies create things that can attract lots of people and cause lots of claims, public facilities. So it's to cap, so it becomes, doesn't become unmanageable.
Right, great, thank you.
Okay.
That's all I have, thank you.
All right, that looks like it is it for, Ms. Foreman, did you have something else or did you just?
Oh, no, I'm just.
It's okay.
Sorry.
Just didn't want to skip over. Looks like that's it for board members. So let's go ahead and vote on the approval of the board's legal firm evaluation for the period of 2324. And that is approved five to zero. Item number two, uh, which was kind of just alluded to a second ago, a board discussion regarding service of process. And I know, um, Ms. DiAgostino, you, you had some thoughts and, and ideas about this and just the board, you saw that, what the statute and highlighted in yellow. And when we do get served with lawsuit, who does it go to? Who can actually sign off for it and things like that? So, Ms. DiAgostino, did you have an idea? Or how did you want to approach with us to get approval on, on addition to the process or a different process?
Well, Mr. Chair, the statute that's relevant here is floor statute 1001.40. And it dictates that in all suits against the district school board, it's the board that's sued typically, not the district itself, service of process must be had on the chair or if the chair cannot be found, on the school district superintendent as the executive officer or in the absence of both those individuals, any board member. And that is also repeated in board policy 8325, that all suits shall be served in that manner. So it's, it's really up to the board how they want to proceed in this. If this is how the board still wants to operate, then service can happen this way. If the board has a desire to have someone else, either Mr. Dye or myself or, or a combination of the two of us have the ability to accept service on behalf of the board, that can certainly be done if that's the board's will. You were all briefed on this issue. I will mention though that a process server, even if the board were to say, I, we hereby authorize process of service and lawsuits to be accepted by, you know, Mr. Dye or, you know, any representative of his firm or general counsel for the district, a process server doesn't necessarily have to agree with that. A process server can say, I'm going to follow the letter of the statute. But you would need to amend your board, your board policy and go through the appropriate steps for that if you wanted to change the policy and allow service through some other means other than the statute. Does that, did I, did I hit everything you wanted?
Yeah, I think, to me personally, I think that we should have superintendent, general counsel, and even school board attorney on listed as potential people who can take the, the service of process and our, and our own policy. Obviously, the statute may be a little bit different because we can't change the actual statute, we can change our own policies. And I would be perfectly okay with one of either our general counsel or the school board attorney to, to take that on and to sign that off. Mr. Tatum and then Ms. Bray.
So, Ms. DiAgostino, how is it that we can? Well, let me ask you this question first. If our, if a school board policy says something that is different than a state statute, which one would take precedence?
Well, if you have a state statute that mandates how service is supposed to happen, then that's the default. But if you want to authorize acceptance of service on others, then that would be a secondary means by which if you could then not challenge that service was not effective if it was done that way.
When you say you could not challenge, you mean someone who's filing the district?
The district couldn't challenge. I mean, generally.
Never received it.
Correct, you know, generally the, the, the whole point of service in a lawsuit is to affect the jurisdiction of the court upon the party to the suit. So someone suing another entity, another individual or an entity needs to get personal jurisdiction of the court over that individual. And if one way to rebut, the, the court has jurisdiction over you is to allege that service was not properly affected. And so if someone were strictly following the statute, the district would be able to say, well, if you served Mr. Dye and you don't have a policy that allows for that, well then, you know, you weren't properly served, the suit can't go forward. But if you have a policy that authorizes service upon Mr. Dye or upon myself or, you know, our, our respective roles, then that would mean we can't challenge that service was effective in that way. So you're, you're permitted to allow others to accept service on your behalf. But absent any delegation of that or permission, basically waiver by the board of challenging service through that means the default would be the statute.
When you say you're, you're allowed to what we might call a waiver, where's the legal authorization to do that? I mean, where's the, yeah, that's the question, where is the legal authorization to do that? The reason I ask that is because whoever wrote this statute, or when it was passed, it says this is how, this is the law, this is how it will be done. And what I hear you saying is, well, we actually can write a policy that is not in line with the law. And I find that, I don't, I don't understand that because it, my understanding is we can't do that normally. But why, why can't we do it in this situation? I mean, I agree with you, I'd rather have you guys take it, it's, it's easier, it'd make it better. But I'm trying to figure, understand how we can go against what the law says because the law is very specific. There are no waivers, there are no exceptions, there's no sub-paragraph that says, however, a school district can delegate this authority to whatever, so.
I understand where you're coming from, and I think what you have to, what you have to understand is why the statute was written. The statute was written so that people trying to serve lawsuits upon districts and boards would know who under the law has to accept. The board is free to allow someone else to accept on their behalf. But it's, it's telling the process server, in order for you to get personal jurisdiction on this individual, this is what you must do. Which is why I said that a process server might disregard our request and say, no, I'm not going to, I'm not going to serve Mr. Dye, I'm not going to serve, you know, the general counsel. I'm going to insist upon serving. So they could say, I'm going to comply with the statute and I'm going to insist on doing that. But if you have a board policy that says someone else can accept, then we as an entity won't be able to challenge service that was accepted by Mr. Dye. So that's how it can lawfully be accomplished and you're not violating the statute if you do that.
Okay. Mr. Dye, second illegal opinion, do you think we can put a policy in place that, to some, to some, it does contradict what the law says, but I'm just curious what you're.
Yes, we've consulted and I'm in agreement.
Okay, then. Okay, thank you.
That's it.
That's it.
Ms. Bray?
It's policy 8325.
Did I misstate the number? I'm sorry.
It's policy 8325.
Yes.
Yeah, that's the one we're talking about here. And it does say the board should be served, but it does not say that legal attorneys can accept the documents. So that's what we're amending. But I would also add to this policy that, um, went to Ms. Foreman's point, when the district is served, that the board members are alerted. I mean, almost immediate. That would be something that we need to add into that policy, I believe. Either the superintendent I would recommend would be the one that would alert us. So I would want to modify that policy to reflect that. Because I don't see in here anywhere that the board would be alerted on anything at all when there's a slip and fall or whatever else that people may file against us. So I would just ask that that policy be added, that language be added, that the board members are notified upon served documents, served legal documents.
Ms. Foreman?
When the process server comes knocking, does he ever call ahead?
I don't have enough experience to tell you whether that happens because I've only been here a short period of time. But my understanding is they do not. I think they pretty much show up downstairs.
Because they'll almost.
They're sitting downstairs on this floor.
They'll almost never get a board member. I mean, that's the reality of it, unless they call ahead. There won't be a, usually is not a board member on the premises.
Or come during a board meeting. Come on, yeah.
I have public comments.
Public comments.
Well, but if the, if the chair isn't here that day, then the superintendent can accept.
Right.
In his absence.
That's what our policy says?
That's what the statute says.
Oh, okay, sorry.
The statute, the statute says that, that service shall be had on the chair or if they can't be found, on the district superintendent.
Okay, I don't see a need to, to change it for that. I don't want too many people being able to accept a.
Right.
Service and then point and go, you know, no, you had it, no, you had it. You know, just, it's the board or.
Attorney.
Or, no, not the attorney, the board or the superintendent, period. Superintendent's, well, he's not always here, you know, because he's out a lot. But, um, but a process server can find, you know, he can be instructed when, when the superintendent will be here and, you know, and come back at that time. So I just, I just think for clarity, for accountability, for disclosure to board members, that we just keep it simple and keep the policy the way it is.
Um, so the reason why this was brought up is because in past practices, or at least is what the guy told me, the server, for 15 years he's been doing it, it's always been superintendent, general counsel, rarely ever a school board member. And so that's when Ms. DiAgostino came in and was like, wait a minute, that's what said that I can't accept this on your behalf. Superintendent was gone. She instructed saying that, hey, we're going to be, board's going to be here Friday, the whole board will be here, you can give whatever you want, right? Well, the guy said, I gotta get this out today, whatever, knocks on my house. And so my wife's like, what is this? And so I didn't call him and he's like, you know, discusses it. And so my, my thought process behind it is, and where I disagree with the hands, I don't think you should leave this building. So I think that the, because it was at my house for a weekend because I was leaving to go out of town when he finally was able to come on the Friday evening before we left to Deland. And so like, you know, I mean, I'm just saying what happens if my house burns down and the documents are in it, right? So to me. So, to me, the process of allowing general counsel here present at the, the building and just putting that name on, if we don't want to add Mr. Dye or, or school board superintendent because that could be off-premise, that's okay. I don't agree we should have everybody on it, but at least someone, we're going to give it to, to Ms. DiAgostino anyways.
Urgency was created by the serv, service processor. It's not necessarily, if he hadn't served you that day, what would have happened?
Well, he came here first.
I know, but he, so you said, come back on Friday, he goes, no, Friday's too late.
And he came, and he came to the house.
Sounds like a salesman to me. Well, he got your address, you know, but.
Well, yeah, I mean, it's public. I mean, I, so, again, if, I would rather them not, we can't control what the server does. We can only control what we do. So, if he comes here the very first time and he can stay in this building by Ms. DiAgostino signing off for it, that should be better than him driving it around and finding my house, not there, your house, everyone else's house. And then, that's just my thought. Keeping it here, not saying just anyone up front can accept it. It's got to be Ms. DiAgostino and obviously everybody else involved, is my thought. Mr. Tatum, you were lit up in the miss messenger?
I think, so what happens if? Let's say a lawsuit goes forward and it was served and you, the general counsel, accepted the service. And then, it actually, the lawsuit like turns and doesn't go in favor of the person who filed it and looks like they're going to lose. And they actually made, they, they may owe us damages like attorney's fees or something like that. And then, their lawyer says, well, you know, this all, this lawsuit, this lawsuit should actually be null and void because it wasn't properly served. And we go, well, yeah, it was properly served. We have a policy that says the general counsel can accept service for lawsuits. And they're, and the other lawyer says, well, no, 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 the statute says that the only people that can accept service are board members or the superintendent. And if I'm a judge and I'm looking at this, I just say, that's what the law says. I mean, whether it's a good idea or not, I don't want people showing up at my door, but if I'm a judge, I go, well, yeah, the law says, you can't write a local policy at a school board that basically does away with what the law says. I'm trying to get past that barrier because that's what we're essentially doing. The law is plain and clear and simple. It says, the law in the state of Florida says, these are the people that can accept service. And for whatever reason, this is, whoever brought this law up, it got passed, the governor signed it, the legislature passed it. And we're essentially going to write a policy that says, well, we're actually going to write a waiver to this because we don't think the law is a good idea or it's really inconvenient or we don't want show, people showing up at our doors. And while that may be a good idea, I just don't see, if I'm a judge, I just go, no, the law says that. Maybe you just explained it, but I'm just reiterating my point. It's, I'm, I'm probably going to vote against this because as much as I don't want people showing up at my door, the law says this, and I don't see any legal way to get around what the law says just because we think it's a good idea or. I haven't heard a, 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 a legal or statutory way from either of the lawyers, even though they think, yeah, it'll probably fly, you know, pass legal muster. I just haven't heard a legal reason why what the law says isn't what the law says unless they'd like to opine a little farther and help me understand more.
Well, just to make sure, just to make sure we're not voting on anything today.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, we're just discussing the process, yeah.
Okay, well, that's fine because it's a, it's an amendment item, but, okay.
Yeah.
Or not amendment, it's, it's a board discussion.
Discussion, yeah.
Did you want to opine?
Yeah, y'all want to help with that?
Well, with the hypothetical that you were, you were presenting, it sounds like you were saying, what if the plaintiff wants to basically escape liability for a lawsuit that they started and tries to use lack of service or improper service as his basis? Well, that plaintiff would simply dismiss their claim. If that was, you know, they, they can, they can dismiss their suit at any time if they want to, you know, end the litigation against us. They don't need to necessarily claim that they failed to serve us properly. But when they initiate their lawsuit, proof of service is something they file in the court file. So, it would be difficult for them to, if we accept service pursuant to a policy and then they file that proof of service in the court file alleging that they've actually properly served us with a lawsuit, I think a judge would have a very difficult time accepting their argument now that their service upon us was somehow defective and therefore they can escape liability in some countersuit, you know, hypothetical countersuit under that scenario. So, I, I, I am comfortable with the fact that you can legally allow for lawsuits to be served upon other parties if you choose to do so. I, I think we can certainly defend that if that's what the board wants. But whether you want to do that is really a business decision for the board to make, not a legal question for me. I'm, I'm agnostic on the issue.
And so, what we're doing today is, it says, board discussion regarding service of the process, maybe that will come up as a future item to vote on at a later time, but it's just we're having a discussion.
Potentially, yeah.
Okay, that's fine.
I got Ms. Messenger.
I can, I can explore my questions further. I'll go watch a little more Law and Order, come back. I'm done that, we can discuss this offline. Thank you.
Yeah, so, what I was going to say is, I, I mean, I expect him to delegate things as appropriate all the time. That's what I expect him to do. So, I don't see how this is any different. This is just another expectation of him to delegate.
Are you saying Dr. Weisong?
Yeah, our superintendent, to delegate whenever it's appropriate. And this is one of those times where it is, obviously, like, this conflicts with other policy that says we expect you to delegate whenever, you know, is, is appropriate. So, I actually think our policies are conflicting. And so, I'm to, I, I, I was looking at the, the board work to see, because I was, I was sitting here thinking, okay, what would I change and what kind of motion can I make? But I'm looking at it and I don't really think, the way that this is written as a discussion on the topic of this and not a policy change, I don't think I can actually make a motion for anything because it wasn't really properly noticed. But I don't, I, I think it's only appropriate to put someone else in here, whether we say or allow the superintendent to delegate as appropriate or specifically name somebody. And I understand, to me, I, I, I completely agree with you that it should stay in this building, right? Like, that just makes sense. So, if you're looking for some sort of consensus out of this discussion, I'm in favor of changing that section of it. I am not in favor of adding in something of like, we need to be notified on a certain amount of time because I think that's really specific. I do think we should do that. We have gotten in the past spreadsheets that always had all of the reoccurring lawsuits. So, I expect that we can get that without putting that into policy. And I'm afraid if we put it into policy, that might actually be too binding and limiting and we might not get what we want out of that. But I do think it would be beneficial for us to say, as a line to other policies, we do allow the superintendent to delegate this authority to, and we can name the person or not, but I, I support that.
Ms. Bray?
Yeah, if it just said, school district general counsel, I mean, it does say, school district superintendent or other member of the, I'm talking about the statute here now, statute one oh oh one point four. I'll advocate that we get that changed. That would be the thing to do, is to, I mean, if they're going to serve us, they need to serve us at the building. And it's all about talking to our legislators and saying, hey, this statute needs to be revised to say, at the district office and specific, or another member of the school board. To me, I don't know how to word it, I'll talk to legislators, but saying that it also can be the general counsel, not anyone's name specifically, because this statute's going to be for the whole state. I don't think it's fair for a person who is serving a document to go to individual houses. I think that's super unprofessional and I agree, it needs to stay in this building. That's just a, I think we have a consensus on that, I really do. I, I think it just needs to be, the statute needs to be revised to reflect on other, on other member, it says on other, by the way, instead of or, member of the school board. I think it should say, you know, the legislators or another board member on the property or general counsel. So, if you look at the statute, it says on another member, yeah, on another member of the school board. But I think after superintendent, it should say district general counsel.
Ms. DiAgostino, if, well, let's say two weeks from now, we're all away at FADs and FSBA, so no one's here for a week. Superintendent's gone, we're all gone. Could you potentially, a lawsuit could potentially say, hey, we're ducking being served? I admit, that's probably not the right word. But, you know, because we're gone for that week in business, I mean, I, I mean, I just don't know if that's even something to consider.
I don't think a court would consider the fact that you're out of.
Because we're all at a conference.
Done business at a conference, that you're somehow dodging service.
Yeah.
I don't, I don't think a court would accept that as a genuine argument.
Okay, good. All right, I don't see any other, let me go back to it, I don't see any other board members lit up to speak, so, good discussion, and we'll see where that goes. Workshop item requests, I know we've got some of those in, and once after this and the reorg goes, we'll, we'll probably get all that squared away later on. We can go to updates, legal department update. Y'all have been working.
I know, you're working.
Last couple, last couple episodes right here.
Getting good value. The, no, just think, I want to thank everybody for doing the evaluation form this year, and I read those and try to be accessible to each board member, build a personal relationship with each one of you and keep you out of trouble and keep you informed best I, best I can. So, I just want to thank you for that.
Thank you. Ms. DiAgostino, anything?
No, no update.
Operations, Mr. Rinaldi.
Good afternoon again. Couple of quick items, human resources. We had a very successful operations paraprofessional job fair on October twenty-sixth. We had seventy-nine candidates that visited us for food service. We had thirty-one candidates attend. They hired fifteen workers and one manager out of that group. In addition, we had fourteen applicants come in for custodial. We only had five positions open at that point and we were able to fill all of our custodial positions. In regards to teachers, we're really at the lowest number of teacher vacancies that we have been in the last two years with forty-four classroom teacher vacancies at this point. The Brazen Virtual Teacher Job Fair that was held on the seventh of November, they had seventy-five candidates and a hundred and thirty-one personal chats between the hiring managers and those candidates. They're still calculating at this point the number of candidates that are going to be offered, but it was very successful and it was a good venture going into the virtual job fair. Our next operational job fair is scheduled for December seventh at the Wakeland Center from two to five P.M. So, we made some really good progress in regards to human resources. Transportation, I believe some of you saw the first electric bus that was delivered. We've got two more that have been delivered to the dealership and are being prepped and they will be coming to us sometime in December. In addition to that, FPL is scheduled to be completing all of our charging stations in mid-December as well. So, we're hoping we're going to be able to get those buses on some specific pilot routes immediately after the first of the year. Our white fleet order with Enterprise, we've had obviously issues with, with getting some deliveries on those as everyone has when it comes to vehicles. But out of the ten orders that we've placed for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year, three have been received. Six vehicles are at our dealerships, at the dealership right now, being retrofitted with the accessories, the ladder cages and all that. And we have one vehicle that just completed construction. So, all of our vehicles for that group will be coming and now we're working on our twenty-three, twenty-four group as well. From the standpoint of our food service, they always have good news, food service. We still have milk, everybody, so we're in good shape. But they'll be serving their annual holiday meal to the students and staff this Thursday, November sixteenth. And Regina wanted to let, you know, they're serving ham, turkey, stuffing, mashed potatoes and green beans with, here he goes, apple crisp for dessert. So, you're all invited and if you're at one of the schools, hopefully you'll partake in that. They also did a first responder day celebration at Prime Elementary School. What they did was they invited members of the Cedar Hammock Fire Station to lunch. The firefighters ate lunch with the students and let them listen on their radios, so they got some experience there. And they were also kind enough to rescue a ball that was stuck on the school's roof. So, one ball was saved during the interim there. The firemen were treated with free lunch that included red, white, and blue Jell-O for dessert. So, they had fun there. Construction services, just a reminder, we've got our ribbon cutting coming up tomorrow, November fifteenth at five-thirty for the Buffalo Creek Elementary School, or Middle School project. So, please keep that in mind and we hope to see you there. Thank you.
I do see a board member, hold on, Mr. Rinaldi, Mr. Tatum?
Giving you your workout today, Mr. Rinaldi. Still curious about bus drivers, how we doing on?
At this point right now, we're, we're staying right around a hundred and four and a hundred and five drivers. We do have two drivers that are just wrapping up their training this week, Thursday and Friday. So, we're moving progressively, but this group, this time of year is difficult because if we were to hire them today, they wouldn't really be paid until after the first of the year. So, that's why it's important for the December seventh job fair that we're having because those individuals, we'll get them through the system and then immediately after the first of the year, get the training and get them on the road, so.
And how many current bus routes do we have?
Right, we're right around a hundred and four at this point right now.
So, if everybody showed up, in theory, they'd be all covered every day.
We would be covered every day and we wouldn't have to have administrators out there, not administrating but driving.
But we still have a few, less administrators, but we still have a few because people call in sick and stuff like that.
Exactly, yeah.
Okay, good. Well, we're working that, we're getting there.
Okay.
Thank you.
Ms. Bray?
How many double backs?
Oh, I, I haven't counted the double backs, but we are still, we're still doing double backs at this point right now. I can bring that for the next board meeting, I'll ask Jamie to put that together for us.
Yeah, that's something that I'd like to see improved on.
Yep.
And maybe even put it on a workshop about, we talked about bus hubs so many times, but we really never deep-dive the issue.
Well, well, from the bus hub, we're working on a pilot right now and we're negotiating wet fueling our buses out at Parish Community High School. So, we are looking to move somewhere around twenty buses out there and see how that impacts our on-time percentage as well.
And what about like on the west side? Anything in Norx for the west side?
No, not, not the west side at this point. We're trying to see how the, how, how it works at Parish Community High School first.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rinaldi. Mr. Jensen, instructional.
Hey.
Board members, as Dr. Breslin presented at a prior board meeting, we have the draft twenty-four, twenty-five academic calendar options available on our website for public voting and feedback. So far, we've received more than seven hundred votes and comments on the academic calendar options, which we'll be bringing to you along with a superintendent's recommendation to the board in December. I just want to remind the community that those are still available to preview and they can still provide input and votes on them leading up to that board meeting. We also, as Mr. Barber said earlier, have our school showcase fair tonight at Manatee Technical College from five-thirty to seven-thirty. So, I look forward to seeing many families there, exploring different school options, meeting principals, school representatives, and just exploring the exciting program offerings we have here in the school district of Manatee County. We also currently are proceeding with our social studies textbook adoption. The committees have met in person two times now. The first meeting was for publisher presentations, reviewer evaluations, and then the second meeting was committee deliberations to select finalists. And so, now that the committee has selected finalists, publishers will be notified and instructional staff. has selected finalists, um, publishers will be notified, and instructional staff at our schools will have the opportunity to review and provide input on their preferences, and then that'll eventually make its way back to the committee when it reconvenes January eighth to make a final recommendation on their preferred series at each level to the superintendent. And, uh, public comment is still open on those as well, so, um, members of the public can look at those materials and provide feedback to the committees as well via our website. And then finally, um, we're continuing our focus on the science of reading. The University of Florida has completed the second series of science of reading professional learning for elementary principals and assistant principals, and feedback has been extremely positive about those professional learning events. Thank you very much.
Uh, Mr. Tatum has a question?
Yes, sir.
Sir, as far as the calendar goes, a suggestion was brought up to me that we just go to school on essentially what is Veterans Day, like we had last Friday off, and that that would really help that one-day problem that we have in our calendar. Is that, can we still do that? Can we still make that change? And, and I say we, I mean, is that a possibility still, or do we have to go with the calendars that were published for public comment, or can we? And I was, and I'd be curious to hear your opinion on that, too, so.
Um, I don't know if I have an opinion on it, I, we have, you know, I, I kind of leave that to the calendar committee because we have representatives from, from, you know, parents, uh, clergy, community members, teachers, who, who kind of all provide input on what they think are the right directions, and then obviously we bring their top, their top-ranked finalists to you and to the public. I can follow up with Dr. Breslin to see kind of what the, what the process would be to explore other opportunities, and of course, we are going to be reconvening a committee in January, um, and in spring to, to explore the, and start mapping out the twenty-five, twenty-six academic calendar as well, so feedback we receive from you and, and community members will also, you know, go into, to the development of that as well.
Dr. Weisong, do you know the, can, at this point, can, could I make a motion when those calendars come up and say, well, I think we should not go to a school on, or we should go to school on Veterans Day? Is that, is that legal and just and right and ethical, or I?
I, I'm not aware of any, um, restriction, there are certainly, um, and there are districts around the state that do not, um, close schools on Veterans Day, um, where instead, you know, school is in session and students are getting instruction, so, um, you know, I, I do think there's a communication piece to that that might be missing if, if we do that change from the dais.
The only reason I'm bringing that up is there's a consternation of that one day that they're going to have to come back a day, have, you know, after Christmas and have one day before a three-day weekend, or come to, or stay a day later at the end of the year, and, you know, a lot of the schools did Veterans Day events on Thursday anyway, not that it took up the whole school day, we can talk about it, I was just informing myself and educating myself a little better, so that's all I need for now, thank you.
All right, that's it, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Superintendent Weisong.
Thank you, Chairman. Uh, board members, first, thank you for your support of today's consent agenda. Um, we were a little, um, lighter on you today, there were just twelve items on consent. I can almost guarantee you that will not be the case in December, just watching the, watching the workflows, so I'm giving you the warning now. Um, two highlights, um, from today's consent agenda, um, you did approve the sign-off of completion on the, um, media center projects at Anna Maria Ballard Bayshore Rogers Garden and Williams, that, that work started last spring. I've been in some of those facilities, um, they are, um, bright, open, beautiful places for students to, um, explore, um, reading and technology and other topics. Um, that was in total about a one-million-dollar, um, sales tax project, so thank you to, uh, the citizens and taxpayers in, um, Manatee County and our visitors as well, and thank you to Mr. Goff, um, in construction services for managing that. Uh, the other highlight, uh, that I want to, um, share is on the, um, human resources addendum. You approved the promotion of Kathia Johnson, principal at Palmview K eight, um, to be our new executive director for school improvement and leadership development. Um, that transition, um, is scheduled for January fourth, start of second semester, um, and, um, board members, as, as we've discussed before, um, that, that executive director position, which was, um, reallocated from a different vacant position, will be building the, um, long-term instructional improvement and succession planning systems that I think one day a, a future board will look back on and say, um, this was a, a really good move to put this series of events in motion. Um, the, um, principal vacancy at Palmview is posted, and our goal as a leadership team is to bring you a recommendation, um, at the December board meeting so that we can have a smooth transition there. Um, at our schools, um, the last two weeks, there have been lots of events, um, but, um, also a heavy emphasis on required instruction topics. Um, so, um, last week alone, our, our teachers, um, were educating students related to Holocaust Education Week, um, Victims of Communism Day, and then, of course, Veterans Day. Uh, and so all of those, um, topics, um, history and citizenship, um, a focus in our schools last week. Um, I'm also especially, um, proud of our, um, high school, um, students and band directors and principals, all seven of our high schools participated at one of the two Veterans Day uh, parades, uh, last, uh, weekend, weekend, so, um, thank you to, again, the, the principals, the band directors and all the students who, um, who engaged in those events. Our, um, focus on, um, safety is continuing, and again, anytime we have a really heavy events month, um, it means, uh, that we ask a lot of our SROs and guardians, and they are, um, out at, at all of these events, and, uh, just a shout-out to all of them for all of the after-school and evening coverage, um, that makes these events possible. Board members, I'll also, also share, since our last meeting, I had the opportunity, um, to participate in, um, one of our, um, crisis management tabletop exercises, um, that's run between our school safety department and, and our, um, school leadership teams, and of course, I won't talk about the details of that, um, but, um, I left there, um, feeling like not only are our teams well-prepared, um, but all of the other agencies that showed up at the school to participate in the tabletop, um, did, uh, did a great job and, um, asked good questions, and, um, uh, it was a, a, a great, uh, activity, and again, those are happening, um, at different times all during the school year and just part of our, um, part of our comprehensive safety plan. Couple other notes, um, board members, thank you, um, to everyone who's able, um, to join the leadership team, um, to serve a lunch to our transportation, maintenance and operations employees. Those are our behind-the-scenes folks that we don't, um, often get an opportunity to recognize, and, um, so it was great to bring them together and provide them with lunch, uh, and, um, no taxpayer funds used, they're all community resources. Uh, we, uh, enjoyed seeing all of you at last week's Arts Rise and Shine Breakfast, put on by the Manatee Arts Education Council, uh, with lots of student artwork on display, and, uh, we were treated to musical performances, um, from some of our high school students. It was a, a really great morning and a reminder that, uh, of the all-around strength of, of this school district. And then, board members, um, look forward to, um, seeing you tomorrow at our ribbon cutting for the new building at Buffalo Creek Middle, uh, and then on Friday for our master board training with the Florida School Boards Association. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Um, item number, oh.
I just had a quick question. The, um, safety tabletop. Is it possible for a board member to?
Hmm?
Yeah, I would like to be involved in one of those.
Okay, great. Were you just pointing out that you had her hand up?
No, I was going to ask the board to indulge me and go back to the issue of Veterans Day as a holiday.
Sure, absolutely.
Um, there is a relevant statute, um, Florida statute one-ten-point-one-one-seven references paid holidays that shall be observed by state branches and agencies, and Veterans Day is one of those days, and if it falls on a Saturday or a Monday, either the Friday or the, I mean, a Saturday or a Sunday, either the Friday or the Monday must be observed as a state holiday.
Okay, that means we, you don't go to school those days.
Yes.
Great.
I would, sorry? I see the superintendent shaking.
Do you want to say?
I, I can, I can, there are districts that do not close for Veterans Day, so I don't know if there's, um, some play there related to, well, or related to the, what is a state agency versus what is a local agent, that, I, I don't know if there's some difference.
There may be a distinction there, but I just, at least, I found that really quickly, so I at least wanted to point that out.
Appreciate it. All right, board comments, I've got Ms. Foreman, Ms. Messenger, Mr. Tatum, Ms. Bray and myself. So, Ms. Foreman?
Okay, uh, I'll try and be brief. Um, Veterans Day, I just want to point out that came about because of a board member who was a veteran, who took, who was passionate about it, and that's how we ended up taking that day off. Um, and, um, it's a way to demonstrate to our veterans just how much we appreciate and respect them, so, that's just, um, just pointing that out. I think if you take it away, that's gonna, um, send the wrong message. Um, in the last week or a week before, um, I attended the, uh, Florida Financial Officers Conference, I got the Finance Officers Conference, I got it all wrong, but, um, uh, Ms. Sellers was there, as was Kathy Miley and Gina Malik for our, uh, and some really interesting stuff, and I'm, um, there were two, two sessions that I came out of there going, wow. One was, and I turned, and, and I asked, um, uh, Ms. Sellers to, uh, to take a look at it, and that was a, uh, a program that would protect us in ACH transfers. You all remember that?
Yeah.
The, uh, uh, county clerk's office got, uh, got scanned, um, on an ACH transfer, and I just, you know, I, I was impressed by it, so, just passing that along. Um, and then the other was, uh, there was a presentation on the legislative update by Brian Moore, who's the FADS attorney, I don't know if you all have heard him? He was, he was fantastic, but, um, there were several points he had to make, and, uh, one of them, he was talking about the deregulation, and that, um, because we did get, um, the, uh, Department of Education's suggestions, but now it goes to the Senate, and Senator Pasadena is taking it a lot more seriously, I think, than, um, than, uh, what the Department of Education did, so, um, so I, he said to expect three Senate bills, uh, which are due November fifteenth, so those are coming out. Um, and then the other, and really interesting discussion, talking about the, uh, the problems that, uh, Step Up is having with, um, handling payment on, um, on the, uh, the private schools getting the voucher program. And not only, you know, are those schools having a difficult time, but because of the way it's set up, school districts are, and are waiting on money that we would have been entitled to. And, uh, he pointed out that Dade County still has not been paid for twenty-five-hundred students from the last year, year ended June thirtieth of, um, twenty-twenty-three, that they taught, and that because of, at some point, they were in the FES, or in the, uh, in the voucher system, they haven't been paid. Sarasota has eighty-seven, he said, I don't know what we have, but, um, I think it's, uh, I think, I, I just thought that was very interesting that, um, that what, what our finance department has to, uh, has to deal with. So, um, and he said that there's talk in the, in the, in, in the legislature about increasing fund balances from three to five percent, you know, since three percent is pretty much looked at as a very low bar. And I'm probably going to have, um, uh, Ms. Cox send you all copies of, from the, of his slide presentation, because it was all really, really helpful, very informative. So I thank you for letting me go, and, um, it was, um, a lot of, not a lot, it, there was some, some really good stuff there, so, thank you.
Thank you. Um, Ms. Messenger?
Nothing for me.
All right, Mr. Tatum?
Thank you very much. I wanted to, I would like to echo the VOCM public speaker, I went to both, all of their events, and it was really good, and the, uh, students were able to do great historical research, and also the ones who did a really good job earned some scholarship money, so that's a great all-around event, just wanted to echo that. My safety tip for the day is I read an article the other day where there are actually some cities around the country that are thinking about ending right turn on reds because they've had a lot of pedestrians killed in that type of situation, so when you're walking, you know, think about that, some people don't necessarily stop, they like to yield, so to speak, and, uh, that can be a big problem on busy streets, so that's my safety tip for the day. And then, as I was looking at our website this morning, the school choice window is open, so I just wanted to make people aware of that, from the, apparently the twenty-seventh of November to the twentieth of December, if you would like to, if a parent or a family would like to do their school choice options. When I say school choice, we're talking about, I, my understanding is choice within the district, right? Like, if you don't want to go to your district school, then that's your opportunity to put in an application for school choice, so that is open from twenty-seven November through twenty December for the twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five school year. And then echoing Veterans Day, I went to Freedom Elementary, and they did a great job with their veterans' presentation, and as far as honoring Veterans Day, I'm obviously very much in favor of that, but, you know, we could still have school that day and then do the type of things that Freedom Elementary did, and just make it kind of a patriotic, veterans-oriented day. I was actually down at the Sarasota Classical Academy, and that's what they did, they were in school, but their whole day was kind of oriented towards veterans and patriotism, so that's an option we can consider when that topic comes up for discussion. And then is also, as far as Veterans Day goes, I was at the parade in Palmetto on Saturday, and the county commission, part of their ceremony was, the county commission had a Veterans Day proclamation, I thought, I want one too, so I don't know why we maybe next year couldn't do school board proclamation for Veterans Day. And then again, just reminding people of the school showcase fair tonight, if you're looking at changing your schools and taking advantage of that school choice option, tonight would be at Manatee Technical College out on, on Route seventy would be a good place to come, and all the principals and school staffs will be there, and you can talk to the staffs personally from those schools to see if there's somewhere else you'd like to go, and kind of like Forrest Gump, that's all I have to say about that. Thank you.
All right, um, Ms. Bray?
Okay, um, thank the board that I had to leave the workshop Friday. Uh, I did go back and view the video of what I wasn't here to see on, uh, a mental health, uh, presentation. Also, uh, met with a potential new CFAC member yesterday. She seems very eager and is, she got a nice resume. Um, I think Ms. Cox has that, maybe she could share that with the rest of the board. I don't know when that can be put on the agenda. Yeah. Okay, so it's going to be on, that's kind of what I told her, that would probably be December, and then the meeting that she would actually, I invited her to come for the CFAC meeting on the sixth, although she wouldn't be a active voting member, but she could be public, just observe. So that was, that was good. I want to recognize some of the, and first of all, I want to say congratulations to the, uh, gosh dang it, I lost it already, to the new position that you filled. I think that was an excellent choice. Uh, I've been to that school, yeah, and the way she manages that school is just top-notch. I mean, just top-notch. Um, and then we have some, uh, retirements, I always like to mention them, uh, school psychologist, Ms. Virginia, thank you for your service, uh, dual-language specialist almost ten years with Susan, uh, and then you have, uh, kindergarten teacher from Freedom for thirty years, uh, Ms. Christina, and I want to thank her also for her service, and then a bus aide, Michelle Lilly, for, uh, working for ten-plus years. Uh, I think it's important to, uh, mention these people that have, uh, worked for our district for so long, because it's, it's about the students, but it's also about a career in education. And if we have people that are staying that long, we have a good career package here, and that's the message, that's why I always bring that up, because it, it's about educating students, but it's also about the people who have built careers. And I've talked to teachers that have retired, you know, and they're like, yeah, it was, it was a long career as what they did, and I'm like, that's what it's about, so, um, the other thing was. So, um, the other thing was, I enjoyed, I missed the veterans parade. I had talked to the organizers up there and I committed, I was gonna be there and all of that. And then all of this happened, so I didn't get to go. But uh, I think there should be a red, white, and blue date on veterans for every year, for every school in our district. I think that instills the value that we have with our veterans. And we have veterans that teach, so I think it's a good way to do that. Other than that, I'm looking forward to the tour, to Onico, a little mini tour. Uh, then I gotta leave from there and go to the NPO meeting. Um, but yeah, there's a lot going on and that was, let me add on to that, that there's a, if you look at the SAC meetings, the sports schedules, the arts events, there's no way I could attend everyone in everybody's district. So I try to focus on mine and I let you, as board members that represent your district, focus on yours. However, I do want to get out to, uh, parish community for their plays. And I've not been able to get out there because I hear a lot of great things about it. So other than that, a good meeting, I think there's a lot of good discussion here. Thank you.
Um, I just want to say, um, the Arts Live was fantastic last week. I believe her name was Emma, who sang the National Anthem, unbelievable. Um, she, but across the board, the Palmetto Orchestra, I mean, it was, it was fantastic. Sitting, talking to the students that we had at the table, um, you know, and, and then knowing some of the career paths and things that they're doing, it was just, it was a really, really good breakfast, celebrating the arts. Um, I want to, uh, to congratulate, Kewanis, a couple weeks ago, they told us that the Manatee High School Key Club did over two thousand hours already, so that's incredible. Um, so congratulations to them and the community service they're providing. Um, I do want to say, uh, thank you to Ms. Foreman. I thought that the amendment to the, um, to the jewel and the trio was, was great, was fantastic. Let's use those funds to, to hopefully prevent and stop the vaping stuff altogether. Uh, so I thought that was really good today. Um, other than that, that's all I have. Um, so we are officially adjourned for approximately, Ms. Cox, you want to give like twenty minutes? Is that good enough? Or twenty minutes is good enough? Grab some meat, okay.
November fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. This is the annual reorganization meeting of the school board, held in accordance with Florida statute one zero zero one dot three seven one. During this meeting, the board members will choose from among themselves a chair and vice chair. Board members, since this is a new, separate meeting, please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, which stands one nation, united, equal, free, and just.
Mr. Superintendent, before we start, just a reminder that nominations do not need a second.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. The next order of business is the election of the chair, and nominations are now in order for the office of chair. Mrs. Messenger.
I would like to nominate Chad Choate.
Mr. Choate is nominated as chair. Are there further nominations for chair?
I would like to nominate myself.
Mrs. Spray is nominated for chair. Are there any further nominations as chair? Seeing none, nominations are now closed, and we have more than one nominee for chair. We will vote one by one in the order nominated. The nominee who receives the majority vote will be chair. All those in favor of Mr. Choate, please raise your hand. There are votes by Choate, Foreman, Messenger, and Tatum. Those opposed? Ms. Spray. So congratulations to Mr. Choate on a vote of four to one on being elected chair of the Manatee School Board.
I had a whole big, long speech.
I'll now call for nominations for vice chair. Mrs. Messenger.
I would like to nominate Mrs. Foreman. And I'm going to give my reasons why. Mrs. Foreman, she has been on this board for a considerable amount of time, and before her time even on this board, she's supported this board for years. On the audit committee, she served as chair of the audit committee successfully, and I think she would be a wonderful vice chair. So that's why I nominate Mrs. Foreman.
Mrs. Foreman is nominated as vice chair. Are there further nominations for vice chair?
I'm just going to renominate myself to continue to work with Mr. Choate and you to continue the continuity that we've established.
Mrs. Spray is nominated for vice chair. Are there other nominations? Seeing none, nominations are closed. We have more than one nominee for vice chair. We will vote one by one in the order nominated. The nominee who receives the majority vote will be vice chair. All those in favor of Mrs. Foreman for vice chair, please raise your hand. I see two votes for Mrs. Foreman by Mrs. Foreman and Mrs. Messenger. Those opposed, please raise your hand. I see three votes, Ms. Spray, Mr. Tatum, Mr. Choate. The nose have it, Mrs. Foreman is not elected vice chair. Next, those in favor of Mrs. Spray for vice chair, please raise your hand. I see Mr. Choate, Mr. Tatum, and Ms. Spray.
You can throw me in.
And Ms. Foreman.
And Ms. Foreman. Those opposed? Mrs. Messenger. So congratulations, Mrs. Spray, on a vote of four to one, being elected vice chair of the Manatee School Board.
Thank you all.
At this time, I will transfer the gavel back to Chairman Choate, and I will call for a five-minute recess to set up for the next item of business. Thank you.
Thank you.
... organization of the school board, November fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. Moving to item number four, approval of times and days for regular meetings. We, I believe someone may had a thought on a day or time that was, I looked, I went through, you know, I remember last year, we had, or maybe two years ago, we had an election night, we had to move to a morning. I wanted to make sure we did, I didn't see anything like that. November nineteenth, the next reorg meeting is not Thanksgiving week, which is nice. We had that a couple of years ago. I don't think, it's, it is the week of Thanksgiving? I thought, I think it's the week before. Regardless, we got to do it, doesn't matter. Anybody else see anything from the dates that, I looked at the sixteenth, that is not Martin Luther King, it's a Tuesday, so the day after, I thought it was, but I was looking at twenty twenty-three. Anybody else need dates or comments? Yeah?
Yeah, I actually have a request. Instead of March twelfth, which would be the appropriate day, can we move it to the nineteenth? I just have something that week, and it would be very difficult for me to come on the twelfth. I don't like to miss a meeting, like I told people.
That's not during spring break, right?
It's not, it's the week before spring break. But like I tell people, like, I didn't even miss a meeting when I had a baby. So I don't really want to miss a meeting, but I would have a really hard time making it to that one on the twelfth. So I was asking if we could move it just one week later to the nineteenth. We only have one that month, so it really doesn't change a lot.
I don't have a problem with that, board.
Good.
Okay, and then the other thing I wanted to point out was typically it's, it's the second and fourth Tuesdays.
Yeah.
But in August, it's actually the first Tuesday, and maybe that's because of school. I think that's smart. I just wanted to point that out.
You did have that same issue, I think, we had a board meeting with bus.
Yeah. I think, I'm not, I'm not having a problem with it. It makes a lot of sense. I just want to point out that that is a deviation from how we normally do things.
Okay, and why we did it, okay?
Yeah.
You may, and we may want to, off to the right there, just do an asterisk and say why, because this becomes obviously public record, so maybe that's why it's on the sixth. If someone were ever to question why did we do it on the first Tuesday? Does that make sense?
It does. Chair, we can, we can add that note. And that is why we looked at those dates, to avoid having a board meeting on the second day.
I don't see any Valentine's Day, which is good, my birthday, which is good.
Well, actually.
Somebody else's birthday?
It's my birthday.
It was Dr. Weisong's birthday, I think, on a workshop.
We do have a PM meeting, it is on my birthday.
Cake, that means cake.
Eggs, cakes, gifts, and.
Oh, gifts, definitely, definitely.
The one thing, the nineteenth reorg, I mean, why, is there a reason why we do it that week? Can't we do it on the statute?
That's true, we have to.
Right.
With the president, like, only on the president.
That's sad, that isn't, you gotta go that far.
Yeah.
To the month, like you're saying, it's going to be like, you know, right up against Thanksgiving. Just makes it tough for everybody, in my opinion.
You mean November?
Yeah, November is what I'm talking about, yeah.
Yeah, we have to do it, statute, you have to do it on.
So many days.
Tuesday.
Oh, I know.
After the election.
Yeah.
That was going to be my point, is that, since it's an election year, that's when I have, there's really not much leeway there, there's.
I think we can pick a time. I think, it doesn't have to be at five o'clock, I think, but.